It's been awhile. Okay, there it is. All right, it is 6:00 PM on on March 28th. This is the Monday regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are all, well, present are all five directors. Yeah. We've got Director Campbell, Director Whitfield on our screen, Director Barnes, Director Johnson, Acting Superintendent Kim Whitworth, executive staff and members of our staff as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's in-person meeting. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. Members of the public can log into the school board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we welcome, or welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while we may appear, or while it may appear, the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues either earlier in meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the Acting Superintendent, her staff, or through outside research. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 1.04, Public Review of the Budget Extension. This is a lengthy piece, so I'm trying to get used to the microphone, so I might be moving back and forth. Welcome to the Monroe Public Schools Board of Directors' Public Hearing of the 2122 Budget Extension. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for you, the citizens of the Monroe School District, to share your ideas about the budget document with your Board of Directors. Remember that the Board of Directors is composed of citizens like you. Each member of the Board was elected by you to provide the best education for our boys and girls. The Board plans to consider adoption of the final 2122 Budget Extension Document on March 28, 2022. Chief Financial Officer Brenda Hunt will present the Budget Extension to you this evening. Following a time period for Board Questions, there will be time set aside for audience comments. A copy of, a copy of the budget document will be made available to anyone requesting it. To help guide the proceedings for this budget hearing, there are a few simple ground rules which will ensure things go smoothly and everyone has the opportunity to speak and be heard. One, all speakers must complete one of the Audience Participation Request Forms, which are available on the back table. Please sign your name, address, and phone number and bring it forward to the Board. Speakers will be called upon prior to giving their testimony. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Each speaker should address the issues of the school budget. If speakers get too far afield, the Board, myself, will remind them to address the issues at hand. Please try not to be overly repetitive in your comments, particularly if a prior speaker has already dealt with a subject at great length. It is requested that speakers make no derogatory nor inflammatory comments directed toward any individual. It is important that the Board, or to the Board, that all persons be heard equally and that they are not intimidated by persons of differing views. All comments are important this evening and should be heard and with respect to the speaker and his or her ideas. Again, again, thanks to all of you for coming this evening. The Board is anxious to hear you. If there is anyone who wants to speak for or against the budget extension, please do so now. No? After. Okay. Do you want me to repeat that three times now? After. Okay. All right. So that's what I was supposed to read. That's for 1.04, Agenda Item 1.04. Moving on to 1.05, Review of the Agenda, and 1.06. We're going to go ahead and give it over to Ms. Brenda Hunt, Chief Executive Officer.
Great job. It's nerve-wracking being in person again after being gone for so long, so it's glad to see you all here. My job this evening is to present our budget extension that's being proposed for our business item later on in today's agenda and to answer any questions that the Board may have regarding the budget extension. So, public hearings, which is what this is, are held for budget extensions as required by law. The Board Resolution for Adoption, which is presented later this, this meeting, is how the Board approves the budget extension. The F-200, which is an attachment on Board Docs, is the document that's required by OSPI to be submitted when we petition OSPI to grant the budget extension. The Board Resolution is legally required format for the budget extension at the local school board level, and the purpose of the resolution or the purpose of the budget extension is to increase the total budget appropriation. And what that means is that it's a total of dollars amount that the district is allowed to spend during the year. So, tonight's budget extension is, the proposal is for the General Fund only. And the district, through this budget hearing, is, is requesting to increase our expenditure authority from $97,685,889 to $99,413,217. That's an increase of $1,727,328 to allow for the spending of unanticipated revenue as well as to provide capacity to implement GASP-87 as required for the 2021-22 fiscal year. The General Fund has sufficient resources to provide for these increases. The reason why, where the portion of the 1.7 million, 1.4 million is for unanticipated federal grants that the district has applied for and received since the school year has begun. And with the beginning of 2122 year, we are required to do our GASP-87 lease accounting, and that requires us to record in our books a statement of present value of leases. The rules, or I guess I should say, the guidance changed last week, and so now it's just leases that we in, enter into as of September 21st. And so I put in capacity for 300,000. It's a revenue and an expenditure, so it has a net impact of zero on our budget. It's a booking entry. It's not an actual expenditure. What's changed? This represents the, the first column represents what the Board approved last August, and the Board approved appropriation of $97,685,889 in expenditures a year ago. We had anticipated at that time to have $10,160,617 in fund balance. We expected to have that $95,737,329 in revenues with a net reven, revenues less expenditures of negative $1,948,560 with a projected ending fund balance of $8,212. So, the middle column represents changes, and the revised column represents what the budget extension will do to our budget, the impact that it will have if the budget resolution is adopted later this meeting. And as we go through the next few slides, I'll go over the revised budget column. So, the new budget provides for approximately $4,766,701 more in revenue than what our original budget was, and it is broken out as the, in the column for current year change. The first thing that I did is that I reduced the budget capacity that we built into the budget in August of last year. Typically, when we build a budget, we build in revenue of $1 million and expenditures of $1 million for revenue and expenditures that we don't know about when we adopt the budget. And so the first thing that I did was take that out of our budget, and so that's why you see the negative $500,000 in local non-tax. We took out 250 from state special where we had budgeted, and we took out 250 from the revenue from other entities which we had budgeted. The intent of this is that now we know what revenue we're getting, so we probably won't need that expenditure capacity any longer. So I took that out. Any questions? Yes, sir. What's your question?
It's Use these microphones again. Here we go. That way it records. The 1.4 million from the federal grants that you mentioned, is that a one-time thing that we got, or is that an annual thing that we're getting?
It's one-time thing, and we'll go over that as we go through the slides.
That said, with the, the up in expenditures that we're allowed to move by adding the 1.27 million, is that going to be annual as well, or is that going to be just for the next fiscal year?
The amount that we're increasing, it is for federal grants that we are receiving that may or may not, we don't know yet, have carryover capacity. As with any federal grant that is one-time, we try to spend that on one-time expenditures. We're not attempting to make obligations in the future using resources that we won't have in the future.
Yeah, my question is for the, for the impact of the increase in the expenditure of the 99.6 million to up, upping our budget to that instead of the ceiling of the 97 million, is that going to be an annual expenditure limit now, or is that going to be just a one-time? Because basically, we get the bump from the federal government, so this year we're able to spend a little bit more, but then our next fiscal year, we'll reevaluate.
Great question. The way we're planning on spending it, the way we have been spending it, is primarily one-time expenditures with one exception, and we'll talk about that when we get there.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. For state general purpose, essentially on that state general purpose line, I adjusted our state revenue based on our actual FTE as of February of '22. The state special purpose, I adjusted for our actual grant amount. Once again, our budget is adopted in August, and these numbers we don't know. We estimate, so I adjusted that state special purpose for the actual allocation, and that's also one of the line items that one of the 250 came out of for, for the capacity. For the federal special purpose line, there was that $5.4 million of increase for federal money, and 4 million of that is our enrollment stabilization dollars. What the state did is they approved one-half of the dollars that we lost due to losing enrollment between 1920 and '21-'22, and that, that half that we're entitled to is slightly more than $4 million. What they did this year, though, is that last year at the end of the year, they gave us enrollment stabilization in the form of state dollars. This year, they gave us enrollment stabilization in the form of federal dollars. And there is a legislative meeting on Thursday of this week, and our hope is at that time to find out what the restraints are for that money. OSPI is leading us to believe that we can use it the same way as we would use our apportionment money, but we're not entirely sure. And so that is the one exception that I was talking about for that 4 million.
When are we going to have the answer on what the restrictions are going to be?
Probably Thursday. But when we get to the very end, I'll show you where that 4 million lands. We also applied for and received two rounds of emergency connectivity fund money, and that is the money that we shifted from basic ed to these federal grants. And so, since we've already paid for the computers, which is required for federal grants, right now, we're just waiting for the money to come to the district. So that is a shift of one-time dollars from basic ed to federal grants. The next line is the balance of SRR2. After we began this year, our SRR2 allocation was increased, and so I'm adding the balance of that SRR2 money, and that will exhaust our SRR2 by the end of this year. The next several grants are one-time grants, also all in the form of American Recovery Plan or the SRR dollars. We have a Tribal Heritage Dual Language Grant, a Homeless Child and Youth Grant, a BEST ESA Grant, SRR3 dollars, this is a portion of the Learning Recovery dollars, and I built in capacity for any year-end expenditures, including summer school. The Return to Learn Grant, we got early in the year, and we used that money for COVID-related testing, additional nurses and paraeducators that are being funded from that Return to Learn Grant. We have American Recovery money for Special Education, and that's that $280,000 and the $23,000 that's on there. I also took out the SRR3 dollars that I had built into the budget, and I took that out to set that aside for use next year. And the 158 is aligning our federal grants with what we had anticipated our federal grants to be last summer to what we were actually allocated this year. And so if you add all that up, that's that $5,417 that we saw on the last screen. Other financing sources is that 300 matching entry for expenditures that we saw on revenues. Any questions on this part? Still, you're gonna wait. Okay. Thank you, sir. So, how we're expending the money. The middle column represents the 1.7 mil, 1,000, 1,727,328 that we're adding, and it is, the last column is what the revised budget will look like. The regular instruction, essentially, we shifted our, some of our current expenditures to SRR2, primarily maintenance, custodians. We have some teachers charged to SRR2. We have some nurses and pares charged to Return to Learn Grant, and then the big one was the Emergency Connectivity Fund that we shifted from basic ed to the federal grant. The federal special purpose, we increased expenditures for the new grant allocations, as well as, like I said previously, shifted grants from basic ed down to the federal grants. Special education is increased by the American Recovery Program Grants. Compensatory education, that's our Title I, our LAP, our ELL, our Highly Capable Programs. I align the expenditures with the actual grant amounts. Other instructional programs, that's where I removed that $1 million of capacity in the expenditure side. Community services, which is primarily our Monroe Coalition, I align the expenditures with the actual grant. And then support services, this reflects that $300,000 for GASP-87, as well as the increased cost for transportation, food service, legal fees, maintenance, and technology. Some of the maintenance and technology will be eligible to be used for SRR dollars. So in that case, as the expenditures come in, we'll shift them up to use the SRR dollars. Okay. So I wanted to return to this page, and I wanted to focus on the revised budget column. The beginning fund balance, as I said earlier, we received enrollment stabilization at the very end of last year. So our beginning fund balance, rather than being the $10,160,617, our beginning fund balance was actually $13,033,956,000. And so with the added expenditures and the added revenue, we expect our ending fund balance to be $14,124,769, and that's an increase from what we had budgeted, 5.9 million in our fund balance, and that's primarily an increase from the enrollment stabilization dollars that, again, we're setting it aside for use next year. Now it's time. It is time. It is time.
I like spreadsheets. So, one of the questions that I was wondering with basically opening, I'm looking at that second, that slide right there, and basically being able to revise our upending, ending fund balance to 14 million, and we look at the impact of what looks like coming, we're coming into in November of 2022, 2023, we have a failed levy, so looking at reality now, and if it does or does not pass, really hope that it does pass, vote for it. I just want it to happen. I'm not supposed to say that I don't think, sorry. Anyway, the, the issue is this. If it does not pass in November, the 14 million, that's pretty close to about what our failed levy is, failed revenue would be from a levy loss. Is that going to be able to help make sure that we're, we have less that we have to cut and less impact as far as class size, teachers, other areas, especially essential stuff, special education, things that are not earmarked dollars? Does that 14 million provide a buffer for us if we are not able to continue? Because we have to create a budget as though it, we don't have a past budget, so we have to create a budget on that. What does that look like for us?
Right now, we're working with a committee, and our last meeting, or not our last meeting, but our third meeting with the committee is tomorrow.
Okay.
But essentially, what we are presenting to the committee tomorrow is a plan to where we will cut half of our deficit that we learned about in February, cut half of it, and then do our work in April and see how close we can get. But we may come to the Board in April and ask the Board to consider use of some of that fund balance to balance for next year.
Another question I had, Slide 13 on the General Revenue Funds, your second to bottom-line item was your removal of $1.8 million and change from reduction of SRR3. Is that reflected, basically setting aside for next year in the 14 million fund balance? Is that affected?
The fund balance is not affected because federal dollars, you have to spend it first.
Okay.
So that gives us the ability to add things back in that are one-time in nature next year to help bridge the gap if necessary.
And that leaves us with 14 million in the bank after expenditures, as far as the budget goes. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Hey Brenda, for some of us who maybe don't know, what's a fund balance? What is it used for? And how do we approve that? Like, how do, how are we able to access that 14 million?
Good question. Our fund balance is a collection of resources that we have that we, part of our fund balance is set aside for fund balance policy. Currently, our fund balance policy is 5% of our revenues plus $1,115,000. And on the budget extension, that would equate to approximately $6,140,201. So of that 14 million, that 6.1 would have to stay in fund balance at all times unless the Board revised their policy. The balance of the fund balance, 7.9 million, is separated out between, one of the buckets of fund balance is money that we've received this year for specific things like CTE, or LAP, or Highly Capable, that we didn't fully expend. So if we received that money for those purposes this year and we did not fully spend it, we would have to set it aside in fund balance to use on those very specific things next year. Another part of our fund balance is for inventory. Monroe School District's primary source of inventory is food service commodities. So at year-end, we have to do an inventory of all our food service commodities and save the value of those commodities in our fund balance as well. The third element, like I said, is fund balance policy. So that's the third element. And then the fourth element of our fund balance is things that we set aside in our fund balance for uncompensated absences, leaves that are on the books for paid leaves that people haven't taken, so our liability for leads. We also set aside resources at year-end for program budgets and building budgets and things that not, were not fully expended. That section of our fund balance, our fund balance, is typically at the superintendent's discretion, and the rest of it is at the Board's discretion, Board and Law. And so at year-end, essentially, all those elements add up to the resources or cash on hand that the district has. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions? Sorry, wait it through 10 seconds. Okay, so I'm going to repeat this three times. Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against the budget extension? Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against the budget extension? Do we have a virtual one? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against the budget extension? Okay. So we just move. I will adjourn the budget hearing. First time with a gavel. No. Just the cable. There it is. Okay. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 1.06, Approval of the Agenda is
I'd like to, President Bumpus, I'd like to make a change to the agenda and remove Item 5.01. And I'd like to make a motion to move the agenda be amended and approved with removal of 5.01.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Oh my gosh, I'll second. There is a motion and a second to remove Agenda Item 5.01. Let's go ahead and, our discussion? Director Whitfield?
Oh. Well, I just learned about the new DDI for our company, and I believe the subject needs to be discussed with the superintendent. That's why I'd like to get it removed and discussed later.
Would anyone like to add?
President Bumpus, can we ask Director
President Bumpus, can we ask Director Whitfield if he's referring to Wasla?
Yeah, we can. I mean, it's all on there. It's public. Director Whitfield?
The Was to framework, I just heard about this on Friday. I know nothing about it. I've reviewed the material, but I'd like to have a discussion with the board and the superintendent.
Director, Director Whitfield, it's my understanding that this is our opportunity to have that discussion. It's a, it's a staff report, so it's an update. And it included that PowerPoint for us to review, but I'm not sure if there's further discussion that needs to happen. Director Campbell?
Yeah, it's under here under Superintendent Staff Reports. This is not a business item that we're moving to report to approve or unapprove. This is not a policy or procedure. This is a report that we're hearing on. So I think that Director Whitfield, the conversation you're hoping for is actually what's on our agenda tonight to have the conversation. That's my understanding, especially where it lays in the, in the agenda.
Well, as a board member, I have the right to have an item removed from the agenda. And I'm making a motion to that effect.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, there's a motion and a second to remove item five point zero one on diversity, equity and inclusion update. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Or nay. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Nay. So we will go ahead and keep the agenda as, well, we'll keep the agenda as approved or as reviewed. So one point zero six, once again. Is there a motion that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda item or agenda dated March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved agenda dated March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors. Oh.
Second.
Sorry, thank you. There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School Board of Directors approve the agenda dated March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Discussion? All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The agenda item has passed four to one. Okay, moving on to two point zero one, student directors, we have Andrew and Nathan, who will present a report highlighting student activities throughout the district. Do we have, do we have both directors on? Hey, how are you? What's going on, Andrew? Would you like to present?
Okay, thank you. For those of you who might not know, I am Andrew Hoff. I am the senior student representative to the Monroe School District. I also have a, there's also a junior student representative. And I go to Sky Valley Education Center, which is about two blocks that way. And and I'm going to give a report about Sky Valley and other things going on in the Monroe School District. So at Sky Valley, it's pretty normal, business as usual for the most part. And we have, of course, I think we mentioned in the last board meeting, we have a spring formal dance, which is pretty exciting. I think it's the first this year and the students are pretty excited about that. And what else? Nathan and I are, have been working on, we're doing a little bit of work on trying to help form a student advisory council. Haven't made a whole lot of progress on that, but we hope to keep working on that. And at Sky Valley, we're very fortunate because we actually can choose our classes on the students and parents choose, actually get to choose their classes. And so we just completed our second round of the class survey. And that's how they, they present classes to be voted on and gradually narrow them down through the different rounds of surveys. And so that's pretty exciting. We, we're kind of finalizing our classes for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And it's going pretty good. And then leadership class, which I'm in, there's a lot of students there doing various leadership projects, one of which some of you may have remember, I reported on last time, it was that donut eating contest. Project. And then there's a couple of others, like tie dye, spirit day. One student wants to do teacher appreciation, teacher appreciation project to coincide with the teacher appreciation week. And yeah, I think there's a couple of projects that escape my mind right now. But yeah, thank you. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Questions, directors?
Just want to say it's really nice to see you in person, Andrew.
Yeah, I'm really glad to be here in person, too.
I was gonna say the same thing. Thanks for braving the room with us.
Any other questions? Okay, Andrew, thank you so much. I'm so excited to hear more about the student advisory council that you and Nathan are working on. So keep us posted. Let us know how we can help, but it's nice to see you in person. Sorry, I was surprised.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so Nathan is online now. Okay, Nathan, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Nathan.
Nathan, how's it going? Um. So obviously, there's a sickness going around right now because I'm here right now. But it's doggy. We'll get back to normal soon. But fun fact, the word normalcy was invented by President Harding in his presidential campaign, done that this week. But getting on with the report, we've had, we've got students ready for spring break right now. Just because we're students and we want breaks. That's normal. But athletics is back in full swing and we've actually got high Q going to nationals, as I said last time. We're going up against Alabama, Pennsylvania and Michigan was in Wisconsin on Friday. So best of luck to them. And also the dance team PR'd at State on Saturday in Yakima, which is awesome. And at the high school, we had a, we had insightful conversations about our personal identities. And we learned that we can talk about who we are and be open about that. And I believe that's all I have today. Just so you guys know, I'm gonna need to leave early today because homework. And thank you. Any questions?
I don't think we have any questions, Nathan, but I hope you feel better. Get some rest, hydrate.
Got it.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, moving on to agenda item two point zero two, YMCA teen programs update. We have Derek Slocum, YMCA teen director, and he will give us an update on the teen programs at the YMCA. Thank you.
All right. Well, glad to be here. I wasn't sure if we were going to have an in-person meeting, but it's so nice to have an in-person meeting and be able to see everybody. My name is Derek Slocum, as was mentioned before. I'm the teen director at the Monroe YMCA. Before I tell you a little bit about me, I want to draw the attention to the title of our screen. It says YMCA Snow Homish County Quality Youth Programs. And I want to focus on the word quality here because what quality means to us, what a quality program is, is a means quality people. And so quality people make our programs quality. It's not just quality staff. I mean, I'm kind of biased in that. I think we do have quality staff. But we also have quality members in our programs and we have quality donors and we have quality volunteers. And that's what make our programs quality. We go to the next slide. If you see up there, it's, this is a kind of diagram. It's a timeline of how we view our programs in the YMCA. And you'll notice that it starts all the way at the beginning from zero and then it goes all the way to an adult. And so our programs are focused from very, very young. And then we go to the five and six-year-olds and then we get into programs for nine to twelve and then programs from thirteen to eighteen. And then we talk about programs for young adults and then we talk about programs for adults. And what does that look like? And how do we get to the end result, which really is having somebody who, you know, is a competent adult, right? And so we're going to focus on programs today of youth and teen programs. And so we're looking at the age range from ten to eighteen. And these are the programs that are going to be, that we're focusing on in our local Monroe YMCA. And I did tell you that I was going to tell you a little bit about me and then I kind of rambled on for a little bit. So let me back up and talk a little bit about me. I actually started in the YMCA as in programs. I was twelve when I started in the YMCA. And I started in programs because both my parents were working. And they didn't want me to walk home by myself, but on the way home from school was a YMCA. And so I entered programs. I did swimming classes. I did rock climbing because they had a rock wall and that was fantastic. And I did some after-school homework classes and tutoring classes that they had there. But then, let's fast forward a little bit. I had that membership back then. And then when I graduated, I went to college, I still hung on to that membership. And, you know, after I graduated college, I started my own business and then a turn of events happened. I lost my business. I ended up with five hundred dollars in my pocket, moved back in with my parents and the one thing that I had with me was still my membership. And so that was my escape for everything. I went to the YMCA every day because I had that membership and that was my only escape at the time. Two years later, I ended up working for the Y because I had that connection with the YMCA. And it was the quality programs that I started with. It was the people that I interacted with that helped me see what the Y was all about. And that's what we're going to talk about today. We're going to talk about the Y programs that connect us and bring us together to thrive. We can go to the next slide. Before we talk about exactly what programs that we have running at the Y, I want to give you a little bit of history of the YMCA. If you go into our website and you look at our mission, you'll find that's the statement that's written up here. And that is the best thing we can do for our teens, our future leaders, is to give them the most resources to thrive and engage deeply with the world. And, you know, that concept wasn't new. Our history, George Williams, started the YMCA in London in eighteen forty-four. And the reason why he and several others decided to bring the YMCA together was because they saw young men, at the time, just young men, who needed a place to be, a refuge to be. And just like I needed a refuge to be when I was twelve, and then later on, I needed a place to escape, they saw that need even back then. So they built programs and it thrived as a volunteer and a nonprofit business back then. And it's been continuing with the same concept to build programs for youth to thrive and engage. We can go to the next slide. That brings us to our first program, our youth development center at the YMCA in Monroe. This is a free program, which means you don't even have to be a member for that a teen to come into the building. You can come into the building, you can come to the youth development center. And you can partake in and experience parts of each program that we have at the YMCA. I say parts because some of the programs you do have to be in to get the full experience. Our youth development center is a program that focuses on, you know, engagement and one that provides a safe place for students to be after school. This program, as you can tell by the slide, it's, it's open at two thirty. So when school ends, all the way to six P M. Mondays and Thursdays, we know that some, some schools close early on Fridays. So we close at, or we start at one thirty and go to six on Fridays. But we also have events that the kids develop in our YDC, which is our youth development center, so that they have an opportunity to even stay longer. They can create parties, they can do things that, you know, they wouldn't have the opportunity to do. But they have that opportunity with no fee at the YDC. We can go to the next slide. Our next programs on this slide, we're going to go over three programs. Some of you might be familiar with these programs. These are three programs in our, in our YMCA that we've circulated through the community already. We have Leaders Club, My Achievers Program and Youth and Government. The Leaders Club is a leadership development, community service program that helps teens discover their full potential. This one is a very interesting one because it helps bring, kind of form a committee of youth. And they get to choose what kind of service projects that they can do in the community. Right now, we have two, two of our students are youth in, in a Leaders Club helping out with our community garden. And we're really trying to get this community garden going and it's going to start building in the middle of April. And so these two youth are really engaged. They're helping with funding, they're helping with building, they're helping with volunteering and learning how to do these things. This is that later, when they have the opportunity in business and entrepreneurship, that they can do these things themselves. MAP is another one of our programs. I actually have a program like this in Sultan and we're still looking at getting programs in here in Monroe. But this is a program that is built for tutoring, socialization and getting high school and college ready. And the history behind this was to get kids and motivate them to succeed. Our, if you go to the goal of this program, it says it's, it's to motivate and support students of color and immigrant students to achieve higher educational and career goals. This is at the core of the program. It is open to all students, but we're really focusing on students who of minorities that need that support and need that help to see their, their potential. The last program that we have in this section is Youth and Government. Youth and Government is a program that brings students together to discuss current events and issues important to them and their community while building their public speaking, leadership and debate skills. This, this has been a popular one in many of our YMCA's in the Snow Homish County, and it really helps them develop into civic leaders. But it also, you know, gives them an opportunity to travel outside of their comfort zone. And we also have a field trip that brings them down to the Capitol so that they can see the democratic process in action. And they absolutely love it. You can see there in the picture, that was the delegate from, I believe it was last year's delegate, and they just, they had a blast. They, they got to sit in the chairs in the Capitol just to have a mock view of what it would be like. So we can go to the next slide. These two programs are programs that we're working on. Esports and mental health. And I want, I want to talk about a little bit of what esports is. When I say esports, most people think video games. And as that's a part of it, that's not exactly what it is. Esports is one of those programs that we've developed. And you, you see there in the picture that there's an N A S E F right there. That program, we took the North America Scholastic That program, we took the North America Scholastic Esports Federation's model and integrated that into our program. This program teaches strategy. It teaches content creation, entrepreneurship, and organization. And those are just four categories with a myriad of skills that they can practice. So for instance, if you're working on strategist as part of our curriculum, you're working as coaching, theory crafting, and data analysis. If you're looking at content creation, we're working on software development skills, streaming skills, and art and media production. Entrepreneurship, web developing, marketing, and sponsorships. Organizing is like general managing, event organizing, and IT support. And so it's not just video games that we're working on here. These are, these are real world skills that these kids can learn and grow in. Healthy Minds, Healthy Lives. This is a program that we're working on through mental health. We were promoting mental health and what that looks like. I think in the last few years, we really understood the need for this program. But we're not, we're not just focused on support groups. We do provide a support group, but we also want to work on skill practices and what that looks like to increase mental health and mental fortitude. On top of that, we want to provide workshops once a month. And we're working with local therapists to do that, to connect these kids and families with opportunities and connect them with community members to be stronger as a whole. All right, go to the next slide. Challenger Camp, as this is our program that's coming up in the summer. This is the last program I want to talk to you guys about. This is a program from grades six to nine. Challenger Camp is an opportunity for teens to grow through team building, personal choice activities, fun activities, and field trips, which we haven't been able to do in the last couple of years. The daily challenges that our youth can participate in are cooking, baking, art, water fights and activities, tournaments. And there's a lot more activities. I'm not going to say them right now. For our field trips, we'll be hiking in multiple locations. We'll be doing paddle boarding, barbecue trips, and some amazing surprise trips that may or may not involve pizza making in an outdoor pizza oven and possible forging other things. Challenges bring us together like nothing else. And completing a challenge together creates lasting memories. And go to the last slide. This is all of our contact information. You'll see me up there. You'll see our senior program director, Jennifer Farlow, and our executive Gina Casa Grande. If you have any questions about our programs, feel free to contact any one of us. We build quality programs through the quality people. And you guys are the quality people along with us. And that's all of our programs.
Any questions? All right. Thank you so much for that presentation and for sharing all of that good stuff. And thank you so much for all that you do, because that requires a special gift, I believe. And so thank you for remaining dedicated to our youth and developing these quality programs. And I think that we're just incredibly lucky to have someone like you and have the programs that the YMCA offers in our area. So we appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item 2.03 Legislative Report, and that is Director Johnson this week.
All right, come on. Thank you, President Bumpus. So I appreciate the opportunity. At the last meeting, my notes were a little disorganized, and so I was winging it a bit. And I missed out sharing a couple of important pieces of legislation that I wanted to make sure to follow up about. So the first one I want to talk about is House Bill 1153. It was passed as amended by the Senate, and it requires Washington Public Schools. It discusses the ability to effectively communicate with students and their family members who have language access barriers as they play a vital role in reducing educational opportunity gaps. I think this is a really important piece of legislation that has passed through our government recently. It is going to require public schools to implement a language access plan and program for culturally responsive systemic family engagement developed through meaningful engagement. So by October 1 of 2022, each school district must adopt a language access policy and procedures that adheres to the principles of an effective language access program for culturally responsive systemic family engagement established in Section 3 of the Act and incorporates model policy and procedures described in Section 9 of the Act. And beginning with academic year 2023, 24, each school district must implement a language access program for culturally responsive systemic family engagement. One of the other new sections added was that the WASDA and OSPI must update a model policy and procedures for implementing the language access program. And when updating the model, the model policy and procedures, WASDA must perform a racial equity impact analysis that involves the community. The model policy and procedure must include procedures for school district board of directors to annually review the spending and need for language access services. So this is something new that we're going to be tasked tasked with coming up. And one of the things, so YMCA talked about students in government. And ever since starting this this process of running for school board and becoming a director, I've been trying to learn more about the ways that our government works. So this bill was passed through our legislature and delivered to the governor on March 10. And that meant that he had 20 days to act upon the bill. And he ended up signing the bill with a partial veto on March 23 of 2022. And it was, it was just an interesting process to me to think about why he did veto part of it and the part that he did. So the the very last section of this bill was, "If specific funding for the purposes of this act, referencing this act by bill or chapter number, is not provided by June 30 of 2022 in the Omnibus Appropriations Act, this act is null and void." Right? So we would have done all this work, and then if it hadn't been funded appropriately, the bill could have gone away. In his letter, and there's actually a letter response that you can see from the governor where he's addressed the bill. He says, "I'm returning here with, without my approval as to Section 15, Engrossed Second Substitute House Bill Number 1153, entitled 'An Act Relating to Language Access in Public Schools.' Engrossed Second Substitute House Bill 1153 provides for expanded language access programs in public schools. Funding was provided for the work at the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, the School for the Blind, and the Center for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Youth. But funding was not explicitly provided for the Office of Equity. Section 15 is a null and void clause, which may operate to nullify the entire bill because funding was not explicitly provided for the Office of Equity. Therefore, I am vetoing Section 15 of this bill in order to ensure that this important work occurs. For these reasons, I vetoed Section 15 of Engrossed Second Substitute House Bill Number 1153." So it made me think about the ways that the the governor has to look at the legislation that is brought to him. And I think it made, it resonated with me because I feel like sometimes we get tasked with questions or we get tasked with things that need to be done for the district. And it's important that we look at them in different ways in order to make sure that they benefit everybody and that they are, they are safeguarded. And I thought that that was a really cool process to watch, so I wanted to share that. Another cool piece of legislation that passed is Senate Bill 5793. And this is stipends for lived experience. This one has not yet been signed. And so interestingly, it was delivered on the 11th of March. They don't count Saturday, or they don't count Sundays or holidays in the 20 days that he has. So I think the last day for him to sign it is April 4. This one, the legislature finds that equitable public policy discussions should include individuals directly impacted by that policy. In order to do so, the legislature supports removing barriers to that participation. The legislature finds that asking community members with lower financial means to volunteer their time and expertise while state employees and representatives of advocacy organizations receive compensation from their respective agency or organization for their time and experience ultimately hinders full and open public participation. As a result, the legislature finds that removing financial barriers for those individuals fosters increased access to government and enriches, enriches public policy discussions and decisions, ultimately leading to more equitable and sustainable policy outcomes. The stipends shall not exceed $200 for each day involved in meetings and actions. So we have stipends as board members. I think that this legislation potentially sets it up for some of the committees and advisory boards that we put together to consider also receiving stipends. And I, I think it's a great bit of legislation and equity toward equity that we are are looking for. The last thing that I'll bring on the ledge report is what I talked about last time with the WASDA Spring Cleaning and the 239 positions that have been adopted by the membership. So just wanted to revisit. I think it would be a really cool thing for us to be able to do. I know we have a lot going on as a board, but we have until April 20. It's an opportunity for us to review what positions already exist that connect to our board, to our greatest interests as a board. It allows us to revise or update as a reflection of our interests. And it allows us to consolidate if we find positions that are duplicated. It also allows us to look at positions that maybe should be retired because legislation has already passed and they're no longer relevant. And finally, are there gaps that aren't being addressed? And can we bring those to, to the students of Monroe School District and beyond? So I think it's a great opportunity for us to advocate. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Any questions? Okay, go ahead, Director Campbell.
I have questions tonight. Director Johnson, I'm really interested in House Bill 1153. Found it interesting. And I'm curious, then, does the partial veto of Article 15 in there, does it, is it then completely nullified? So my question is the impact on our district for this year. We were talking about dates that are in the 2022 calendar year. So we're talking, so my question is, when Governor Inslee vetoed part of that, does that, did that kind of hamstring the rest of the bill for this year? Or is it still being worked on and it's going back to being edited?
Nope. So his veto just removed that one portion of the bill that that said that if it was not funded appropriately in all places, the whole thing could be nullified. So it allows the work to move forward as it was written out.
So do they have to go back and provide funding for that then? Is that something that's?
That is a good question.
That's my question is if it's not, I I'm looking at it like this, just I'm thinking, let's say, think Monroe for us is we have a humongous Spanish speaking populations, great percentage of our of our community. We also have a very, very large diverse language groups from Indian speaking backgrounds, which is not one language group. That's very common for where I work, and it's not, there's many languages in that area. So we're looking at, it's not just one language group. It's now we're looking at needing to get software, materials, translators, all of that, and that funding and what that looks like for us to get ready by. You said it was, what month was it in 2024 that it has to be implemented?
Yeah, and yeah, the 2023, 24 school year.
So we'd have to get our policy up to, so WASDA's got to get things together. Then we have to adopt policy, and then we have to get those things in place. And it's one thing to have Spanish speaking translators and materials, which is probably more readily available than Tamil Tagulu or, you know, Hindi, all those different language groups that are now becoming much more greater. And those are just some of them. We have other language groups as well to be able to do that, which I think is a great policy. It's important. But at the same token, it makes things quick of saying, how much are we going to have? And then what is OSPI going to provide guidance on, hey, here are some things that are usable or workable?
Yeah, so the bill, if you go in and read it, is much longer, right? There, you know, 15 was the last portion of it. So there are 14 other items that get covered. There is an advisory council. There is work that gets done to make sure this is set up. Like many parts of funding education, I agree, there probably going to be some challenges there. So we will, we will see what happens. I can say for languages of lesser dispersment, I think is the phrase that's used. So in in working with LNI, I actually have a an organization that I can call and request the language interpreter that I need, and they come on the line. I believe there are some districts near us who have a similar service. So when you're, when you're talking about those those additional languages that we need to be providing support for, I think we'll get creative and and find some good technology to do that.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Director Johnson, thank you for reading through all of that. That sounds like the one bill was 15 pages. So I can't imagine all the pages of information that you read through. So thank you for providing that legislative report for us. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, Audience Comments. "We welcome comments about school board and district decisions, processes, and concerns. Forms are available in the back of the room to sign up to speak and outlines the school board's process to do so. While the form outlines our procedure to audience comments, I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, however, if several are here on the same topic, a representative may be selected for the group and speak for 10 minutes. In doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to the representative. Tonight, we will be utilizing a timer to assist in tracking each speaker's time. There will be a sound that chimes when you have 30 seconds remaining in your three minute time limit. And then another sound will chime when your time is up. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during the school board meeting is not the forum for staff complaints. If you are here for that reason, please see any staff member here in the room, and they will help you learn more about the staff complaint process. Be aware that if at any time during a speaker's comments, their words begin to approach a personnel concern, I will remind the speaker once to keep the comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes, and concerns. If that speaker continues with staff related comments, I will give 30 seconds for the presenter to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward if they complain about personnel. And Keith, I believe we have maybe one online. Yes. Okay, so do we want to start there? Awesome. Okay. Yeah. Hey, Isaac.
Hello.
Hey, Isaac, can you please state your name for the record and your relationship with our schools?
My name is Isaac Harvey, and I am at Sky Valley.
Okay, Isaac, go ahead and share.
All right. So I would like to talk a little bit about Sky Valley for those of you who don't know. I've got it all written down here, so if I look over here, that's why. First, I'd like to tell you who don't know about Sky Valley, a little bit about how it works. First, it's kind, it's kind of like college where you choose classes and then you take those classes. And so for me, I'm taking STEM. And I love the STEM program. I'm in high school STEM. And I'm learning all of those things that are in there. But Sky Valley also has other cool classes such as a Percy Jackson program. I took that three years ago, I think. It's not really a program. It ended. But, I mean, Percy Jackson, it's a really cool, it's a really cool class, and I learned quite a bit. They also have ESS and Montessori. Besides awesome classes, there are also a few more differences to how Sky Valley works. It's a parent partnership program, which means that is is the parents who are in charge of the kid's education. From my experience, this means that I'm kind of directing what I learn. And so it's on me if I miss an assignment, which means that it's really helping me with the skills, the priorities. the skills of prioritizing. And that's what I had a hard time with that. And so STEM has really helped with my tenacity to get things done. For the three-ish years I've been at Sky Valley, I've pulled my brother and my best friend into Sky Valley. And they're loving it. My friend came from the Monroe High School and now he's in STEM as well. And we're able to challenger each other to go forward. Something I, a very important thing I'd like to say is that there's no bullying at Sky Valley. I've not seen any bullying. Came from Hidden River where I didn't really fit in, didn't have many friends. And once I came to Sky Valley, I immediately found my people. It's a, before COVID, I was playing with a group of people who were actually quite a bit older than me. And we played Magic the Gathering, which is a card game. And so it's fun to play with people who are more experienced than me. Another important thing to note, just to wrap it up, is if you have any extra questions, you can talk to any of the teachers. There are no bad teachers at Sky Valley. They're all very nice. And I'd encourage you, if you have any questions, to go talk to any of them.
Thank you, Isaac. Okay, and we have Ben Brittingham up for audience comments. Ben, hey Ben, can I have you state your name for the record and your relationship with our schools?
Yeah, my name is Benjamin Brittingham. Pardon me. I'm the JV golf coach at the high school, the Legends Baseball Club president and youth sports coach of 22 years, both in Kirkland, Monroe and the East Side. I state that because I'm a big believer in the impact that youth sports has on our kids. And I'm here today to talk about facility use fees at the high school. I've got three points that I'd like to make, at least have the, the board consider when making decisions on that. And the first is that, how do we decide what, how do we leverage these fields as an asset in our community? We had the levy in the bond those past few years ago, the, the fields are in place. And so what do we want to do with that? And that should drive our discussion for what the, the policy should be, as well as what the fee should be and the fee structure for the, how, how that provides access. I believe this group understands the value of youth sports and the opportunities that it provides, both at the YMCA level, Boys and Girls Club level, and all the other youth sports, sports, sports programs as well. I also think this group understands the value that synthetic turf fields provide in the Pacific Northwest. For those who have had to use the Sky Valley fields, and every other day they're rained out in March, April and May, having those turf fields is a huge asset for actually having those, those sports programs be functional. And the pricing should follow whatever that goal is, it shouldn't just have the tail wag the dog and, and work backwards from there. Secondly is pricing affects access. Facilities and fields are about 70% of our Legends Baseball Club budget. So when prices increase in triple or quadruple, that's not just a small portion of our budget, it's a significant portion of our budget. And those prices get passed on to ultimately to the users of those programs, which is the parents and families that those youth programs participate in. Those fees impact those that are more at risk the most, more than others. And so what happens is, is they end up not being able to participate or not be able to play without some sort of additional scholarships from them. Third is community trust. And while I think point number two is probably the most important to me, the community trust may be the most important to you. The recent levy that didn't pass, I can, I can tell you there's an impact from the previous levy. Having been part of the Sky Valley Little League Board at the time and Legends Board, the board and, and school district had partnered with all of the youth sports programs in Monroe to garner support for this. And it was sold to us as a community asset. And in speaking to other youth sports programs around, I can tell you that they don't feel like it's being served as a community asset. And that's been a frustration for us. So in summary, I'd like to start with, what is it that you want to use these fields for? How does this, how do you, can we best leverage these fields as community asset? Understanding that the pricing impacts not only everybody in the programs, but mostly those that are at risk. And thirdly, understand that there is a community trust issue. There's a perception that we were sold something and we were delivered on that. And I'd like to consider that when you determine those pricing policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Okay. Thank you for your public comments. We would like to remind everyone that the purpose of school board meetings is for the board to conduct its business in public. Therefore, we cannot respond to remarks made during the public comment section of our meetings. These public comments are personal opinions shared by community members and are not censored by the board or staff. As such, comments made by community members may not be in alignment with board policies or with the values and beliefs of Monroe School District. Again, we thank our community members for participating in our meeting this evening. Moving on to agenda item 4.01, facility use fees. And who do we have present? Devlin.
Good afternoon, board members. Thanks for engaging in the conversation about facility use, which it's great that we say wait off Ben's comment. So hopefully we'll be answering those and having the discussion about the topic. So this presentation is very brief. It's really engaged to just talk about the process that we went through to present the facility use fees for the fields or categories. And we'll highlight some of the things within our policy as we segue into the discussion. The meat of this will basically be the discussion that takes place. Heard a lot from the community, so I have a feeling we will answer a lot of these questions and have a direction that we'll go forward. So our policy is the 40 or 46, 42, 60 policy.
Devlin, can I interrupt you really quickly? Can I have you both introduce yourselves?
Oh, sorry. Devlin Piplik, Director of Facilities from the School District.
Victor Scarpelli, the Executive Director of Support Services and Operations, and one of the departments is facilities under my direction.
Thank you. So the things that I highlighted in the section, the first part is referencing that the fields are an asset to the community and they are designed to provide community engagement. But also, it also ensures that the decisions that are made from the school board also align with the fiscal responsibilities that our district has for those fields in terms of lifecycle or liability that goes along with those, as well as ensuring that we are not over and extending ourselves or neglecting those. The second part is, is that we take a process to evaluate those fees and we present those to the school board to make a decision on what that fee structure will be. Another section that I've highlighted in here is a notation that in our policy, we don't allow access to facilities without district personnel. Also, we don't issue keys to facility users, just because of one of those things that we have outlined in the policy that plays a role in that. And the fart, the last part is it talks about our staffing requirements for non-staffing time. So usually we have custodians onsite and we have resources that are available to assist to help facilitate reductions in cost. But we also do it in a way that we're not reducing our service levels to our students in the school. So the, I've really focused this presentation just on youth sports, just because that's kind of the main focus. So within that, we have, we have five categorical classifications. The ones that pertain to youth sports are classification three, which is youth sports within Monroe. We have a percentage allocation, as long as it's 50% or higher of Monroe School District students, they would fall in that classification. Adult sports and out of district sports, which is students that are not within the district are in the higher classification. Now, in reviewing those recommendations that were presented in the summer of 2021, I'm just going to recap kind of those things. So our thought process, when we do that, we evaluate all of the districts in our surrounding area. So when we presented a recommendation for that price point, we had reference nine school districts that were in our neighboring geographical area. So those areas were Edmonds, Everett, Lake Stevens, Lake Washington, Marysville, Muckato, North Shore, Riverview and Snohomish. So when we presented the recommendation, it was based on the average of those. So that's how that price is determined and why the recommendation was made. However, within facility use, there's no uniformity among facility use fee schedules. They all vary and there's a lot of interpretation that goes with that. So unless you've actually had those dialogue with the people that are working the facility operations, you don't really know the true costs. So a lot of our organizations are presenting information that this fee is different than Monroe or here's the price point for that. It's not necessarily aligned with how the final price will be. So a lot of those addition fees that go in there are custodial rate fees that don't impact service levels within the school and it doesn't account for facility facilitator fees that are also required. So case in point, if you go to Edmund School District, yes, they charge you $20 an hour for their artificial turf. But part of that that is not listed is they also charge a 1975 facilitator fee. So, and it doesn't matter if it's during school or after hours, that is going to be the cost that you're going to pay. So that, that's just the way it is and it's across the board, different for every organization. Within those references that we used, there's only one school district that really closely aligned with that and be Snohomish. And even their artificial fields, because there is a higher cost per use per hour for artificial fields across the board. The lifecycle replacement, the cost that goes into installing those types of facilities are a gigantic expense. And you usually don't get type of replacement or lifecycle cost based without a bond. So the facility structure that you have within your facility schedule should account for lifecycle replacement costs and maintenance of the fields. So one of the things that is really unique in for facility use is that, yes, artificial fields are great. And it allows for almost two to three times more use in a year than a traditional grass field. But with that also comes a great more maintenance cost. So you have to be able to service those and those maintenance intervals that go in there have a cost to the district. So you want to make sure your fee structure that it has accounts for that as well. So with that said, I'm going to open up for questions and I, hopefully we can get to some of Ben's questions as well. And if more investigation or process or data needs presented to kind of drive the next step, I more than happy to do so.
I have questions.
I'm sure everybody does. I want to make sure you address them all.
Okay. So when did the price increase go into effect? And then when was the previous time before that?
So the recommendation board was in the summer of 2021 and the price increase took effect September 1st of this year.
Before that, did we have any adjustments in the price?
I think we had one about three years ago and we were set to actually do a price increase prior to COVID. But obviously with COVID priorities within the district took a greater urgency and our facility uses were closed to the facility. So that didn't take place. And, and in reviewing that, the real issue comes from Park Place. So in our other facilities that were implemented, such as the ball fields at the high school, we didn't have a prior field that we really rented out. So when we added a new price and there was four brand new facility, the problem with Park Place is that when the field, the field was installed, we had an existing one that was based on a prior grass field and the cost was at 475. Now, at the time, we weren't going to go back and people who had already made reservations and say, hey, now we're going to price, you know, bump your price. We knew eventually that we'd have to streamline that to be comparable to other districts in the area. And yes, I, I'm not going to discredit the 475 to a $50 jump, that's significant. So, which is why it's presented in advance and added to the agenda. It's unfortunate that some of our organizations didn't get that until they submitted their application months before the season started. So.
Yeah, I just have so many questions.
I have so many answers.
Okay. So during COVID, we were maintaining the fields then and but they weren't being rented out or they weren't being used.
That is correct. It was later on during COVID that we opened the fields up for facility use. So and obviously if nobody's using the field, maintenance is smaller intervals, so less frequent. But biggest thing for artificial fields is organic material that falls on the field turf. If you don't pick it up, it grows. And those are the types of things that still need to be maintained.
How much does it cost to maintain a field like?
They generally say that it costs about $5,000 per year per field. We have obviously seven fields that that number is driven by facility hours. So the traditional model is 48 hours a week. Our schools are obviously putting that on just during the week. So facility use after hours is high. So you should see a higher interval of maintenance costs. So, I mean, they're, they're projected at, I think 2,000 hours or something like that. So it's, it's a significant commitment.
Currently, how many Monroe-based organizations or programs are renting the fields? I have a son who plays for Snohomish and I know that his teams are on Monroe fields often. And so I'm wondering how many of our Monroe-based clubs are using these fields this year, this season?
We've seen a significant drop from Monroe groups. We've seen a rise in facility use from outside Monroe. So we had a greater number before, but obviously the price adjustment set has declined. MLB Pony Baseball, I'm not sure I would consider that really Monroe School District. I know they probably have some, but it's the quality, quantity. But they're using the fields every single day at Hidden River. So that's basically six days a week from when school's out to when it gets dark.
Let someone else, this one else.
I got questions. I know like my son did Boys and Girls Club Flag Football. I know they were using the fields at both Hidden River and Park Place. One question I, I have a lot of questions to. One question I guess is I see the comparison that we have with other districts. One of the things, and I've seen a lot of material, so correct me if I'm wrong down. Some of the information I think that we got from you guys, from you and Victor, your office, was that one of the big advantages, other than the fact that yes, we live in the Pacific Northwest and getting a baseball game rained out in the spring is, you know, every other day or every day. And so things like having access to turf is good, but then one of the other things, pros was it's a, a less expensive cost in the long run and maintaining fertilizing, mowing and all the, the costs that go into maintaining grass fields. Is that correct?
Yeah. So usually on average, they say it costs about $23,000 a year to maintain a grass field, about $5,000 for, for artificial.
Okay. So my question is, we look at costs, we're looking at, let's call it a fourth of the price roughly. Yet our prices are increasing by 10 times from 475 to 50 bucks. And then, and, and so I'm, I'm thinking about the impact that that has. Let's say you have a parent who puts their kid on a club team and it's 50 bucks to join or whatever. So if they have to increase their cost 10 times, now you're looking at $500 and that, that becomes an equity issue. Now we're talking about lots of families who can't afford to play at all.
So it's a little misleading. So you would say that yes, the cost is, is different, but in reality, because the fields are actually open for more periods of time. So under the rain out delays that go with the grass field, they projected like an 800 hour usage for maintenance. And whereas you've got people operating on less breaks, you actually have a greater number of maintenance needs for it because you actually have more use. So you know, if you, if you take, if you were even to do a service contract for an artificial field, just for the one year annual, it's about $5,000 for an outside company to do it. And we have five or seven of those fields. So if we contracted it out, we're talking $35,000 a year for the district to absorb that cost. So the good thing is that we've taken steps to minimize that cost and use what we have. So we thought we have things within our structure. We were trying to minimize those. But you still have to account for the maintenance needs because you have three grounds, people that service all of our sites plus the seven fields. So that's a lot of.
Okay. So, but with that, and I'm, I'm using big numbers right now in my head, but I'm, I'm tracking with you, but I'm just trying to follow. Okay, so but with that, and I'm I'm using big numbers right now in my head, but I'm tracking with you, but I'm just trying to follow follow the the numbers with this. Let's say it takes five thousand dollars a year to maintain a turf field. And it took, you said twenty, how much did you say for a grass field approximately was?
Yeah, they say in the total allowed hours for uses based on two thousand and sixteen is the usage and then it's eight hundred for a grass.
No, I mean, the price was like twenty three thousand.
Twenty three thousand, yes.
Okay, so let's just let's just say five grand and twenty grand. And if it costs thirty five thousand dollars for the the fixing, just because of the use, the wear and the tear on the turf field, five grand for maintenance and thirty five grand for for working on it, that's a forty thousand dollar impact. And so for the grass field, it was about twenty grand and we could do that at a four four seventy five cost. So why don't our prices just double instead of increase from four seventy five to fifty fifty dollars? Does that make sense? Like we're charging five bucks? Five bucks ahead for a twenty thousand dollar annual impact or around there, but we're charging fifty bucks for what could be a forty thousand dollar impact. So our price, our cost to the district doubles, but our our charge to the consumer increases tenfold. I'm just looking at the ratios. They don't, they're not proportionate to me.
So the ratios are based on our surrounding districts. How that's how those numbers were driven. No matter what fee structure you have, there's not an allocation of funds within that that's going to address lifecycle costs. So I think when I talked to Brenda about this, she allocated all the dollar amounts that we've taken in for facility use. And I think it was roughly about twenty thousand dollars. The replacement of that field at the high school was seven hundred thousand. So I mean, there's no way you're going to cover the cost outside of that.
I understand, I guess, but we're also not going to see our our club teams, especially our Monroe students using the fields when we cannot. I mean, these are made for Monroe kids. And so we don't have Monroe kids using the fields because they can't afford to use the fields. And then that's just going to exacerbate the costs. And so I guess my question is my concern, I put this in my email when I was when I was writing my board comments concerns or questions that I had for that is I guess myself, I'm not concerned as a board director at what surrounding districts are doing or not doing. I really could care less. I understand that that's a great baseline, but more circumstantial. So if North Shore and Snohomish and Lake Stevens are charging X, great, but what we what are we doing to make sure, one, we can cover the costs of our fields? And two, is it affordable for our students to be able to use? And if one district charges fifty bucks ahead, it doesn't, I don't know that necessarily means that we need to be charging fifty bucks ahead. If we can charge forty or thirty or twenty or whatever that is and still say we have enough to cover the costs, we have enough to cover the maintenance, we have enough to cover all of the different line items that go into the cost for us. I think that it it from on my end, I would look at, I would like to see a possibility of looking at restructuring of the prices regardless of what. And I appreciate the the chart of what other districts are doing around our area, especially like districts that have turf fields and how these usage agreements. But for us, it it just the ratios, they don't add up. And then at the end of the day, Monroe kids don't get access to these fields. And if and again, that was part of the bond was you have taxpayers who are voting and they're voting on a bond to say, yes, we want a capital projects bond to be able to put this in. And guess what? Our kids who are doing summer league ball and AAU ball and all these different activities get to use these turf fields. But now they're so expensive that we can't afford to use them unless you play on a on a school league. And and so with that, now we also have a levy that's coming up. And we're asking people to to trust the district with their taxes and we already have an issue of, you know, it it just it doesn't, it doesn't put trust. And so for me, looking at that, one, it's it's saying what is the right thing, regardless of what other districts are doing. My question, I think for the board is for us to relook at saying, what can we afford to do where we can say we're covering all of the costs that we need? And we are also trying to make this a a a meet in the middle somewhere where we can make this affordable for families. Because later on our agenda, we're going to be, I'm not trying to get ahead, President Bumpus, but we're not, we're supposed to be talking about diversity, equity, inclusion. So we look at families of lower socioeconomic status. And they have less access to resources. And now you have students who it becomes an equity issue of I can't play club sports because it's so ridiculously expensive that it's beyond any opportunity for my family. And this looks at summer engagement. This looks at kids who are in the off season. So for me, there's a lot of components there that I have a lot of concerns about. I think that it my my concern is we can look at saying, where can we, where can we reevaluate our pricing structure for this so that we can engage kids? All right, I'm done talking.
Completely agree with you, Director Campbell, especially with our nonprofit groups where I look at like it is our baseball softball groups who we've currently heard from, but those are nonprofit groups. That means they are trying to offer scholarships. They are trying to save families money. And so to hear that most of our Monroe groups are not served by Monroe fields does feel a little icky to me. And that seven hundred thousand dollar field is awesome for Friday night football games and for soccer games and for lacrosse games and for track and field. And it's beautiful to look at. And I'm so grateful that our Monroe students have that, our Monroe athletes and families have that. But I do think that that also needs to be extended. I'm one of five, but that also needs to be extended to our families and our athletes, especially participating on our nonprofit athletic groups. So.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. And I think we've we've touched on these, but I'm hoping to just hear straight even numbers so that I can make sense of it. So the annual cost we're seeing is thirty five thousand dollars a year.
So the point of this conversation is a discussion about where we're going to go. And what I'm kind of hearing from you guys is that you'd like to see greater breakdown of the cost and the impact that we have from a district expense standpoint and come up with something that's better served for accessing to the facilities, but also making sure that we're covering the costs. So I haven't, I haven't put together that type of data because I didn't know where we were going to go with this conversation. I'm more than happy to engage and put another presentation together that breaks down that with some options about what the district would like. At the end of the day, the board drives that decision. We just present the recommendations. If you find that those recommendations can be better served for the community, we can certainly tailor that and provide data that will help drive that decision. If that's the intent.
Okay, so I I would want to know what is the cost? What is the revenue? And what is the district's expectation of how much we are paying to use those fields? Is our expectation that all of the outside groups coming in pay for all of the maintenance and and our students are or our district isn't paying for any of that maintenance? I would have an issue with that. And I and I think also, you know, in alignment, I'm sort of thinking about this as in-state tuition and out-of-state tuition for colleges. And there are plenty of colleges that solicit out-of-state students in order to cover the costs of running their institutions. And it sounds to me like without too much effort outside of Monroe is is coming in and willing to spend the money. And so I would be interested in looking at in-state, in-district tuition fees for our, and I and I know you said that we have that a bit with the the categories three and five. But it seems to me that that we can leverage that further to support the people of our community.
I think that 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 aligns with a conversation we had last summer, I think, when we talked about this last time, because we set a prioritization list also of usage, not just the pricing structure, but who gets priority for usage when there's two different organizations. It is, and it's kind of like, look at a target of it's it's local, local teams, local clubs, Monroe kids. And then you say, okay, other teams, other clubs from out outside. I know, for example, lacrosse is huge in this area. And so is this a Lake Stevens club or is this a Monroe club that's looking for usage? And who gets those priorities for uses, not just the fields, but of district facilities? And I think that a pricing structure that also reflects that could be helpful. One other issue I was just thinking of, and this is based on a conversation that I had with Acting Superintendent Whitworth, was about issues of we have uptick issues of substance abuse with students. And that's not just Monroe. This is our whole area. Students who are not engaged are students who are bored. Students who are bored are not students who are always making the best decisions, but we know that their activity, not just in athletics, but their activity in extracurricular activities is a direct correlation. So this isn't even just a financial balance sheet issue for me. This is what is good for kids. We know that student athletes are students who succeed more. They have a higher success rate and graduation rates in their grades. And so for me, this is not just a a numbers game. And I know that the numbers are important. And we have to make sure that we can afford the fields that we have and be good stewards of the resources and the asset that they are. But I think that a relook at this is is a huge issue because we have non-financial, well, they they have a financial impact, but not a direct issue, I think, for for this as well. President Bumpus, you've talked about this as well with your guys' organization. This is an issue of of mental health. This is an issue of all of those kinds of things. And you guys have been huge advocates for that. So I think that this, this is not just a a financial thing that we're looking at. And it is important, but these are other issues of the emotional and the health of our of our community, which we all know is an absolute low right now because of what we've gone through. So.
So Devlin, I think we are hoping that you can supply us some more information, a different presentation with some more numbers. I'm hoping that we have maybe some collaboration from some of the nonprofit groups that we have, especially in attendance tonight. And I think I think I heard as well that they weren't really made aware of it until there was maybe like an invoice or an estimate.
Yeah, unless we're looking at the website and we're tracking that change that wouldn't have been notified.
Yeah, that's a problem too. Yeah, that's a problem. So I I'm hoping that we have another presentation with that collaboration and input. Directors, any other questions? Okay. Director Whitfield. Hello.
My fellow directors have made excellent points. I wanted to talk about something a little bit different in terms of the types of kids that use the field. You know, the to compete at the level that basketball, football, soccer. The students are highly trained. They have a lot of additional team sports they're a part of. There's a lot of kids that just want to play and learn about baseball and learn about soccer and they'll never be able to be able to participate. There's not that are not good enough. They just don't have the same drive or the same parental of the the financial ability. So if we think about all the kids who just want to go out and have fun and go out and play and learn, I think that should be an important matter. And the taxpayers did instruct entrust us with the money that we spent to to get these fields with the expectation that everybody would have access to them. And it shouldn't just be the individuals that are part of the, you know, the organized sports teams. So thinking about kids who maybe aren't that good athletes, but they they want to play, they want to learn and the the values that you learn as part of a team really make a difference. And I know there's a lot of dedicated coaches and support who really put important values into the kids and put a lot of their own time. So in terms of the items that were brought up, I'm in a, I'm in agreement with. But just thinking about the types of kids and the commitment we made to the you know, to the community. So.
Thank you, Director Whitfield.
Director Barnes. So one more point of clarification. We talked about the fact that they didn't know about these changes. Have they already been billed for and paid for the usage of the fields at this new price?
Yes, so that was where they submitted their application and invoice was presented to them and they were like, oh, that's a lot more what happened. And that's where they.
So so after we come to an agreement on this, is this something that we can rectify and give funds back? If need be?
Well, any of the baseball groups that were in Monroe or not using the field, so they haven't been invoiced or charged for anything. So if you want to make changes for out of district things, I guess that would be open for discussion. That's really on on the board's discretion if they would like to refund based on prior usage.
All right, Devlin, looking forward to it.
Send an email, figure out a way we can expedite the process, but still involve groups. And is there any board member who might be interested in engaging in those discussions? Everybody's got to hand up, is it going to consolidate down to just one?
Can I call dibs? That's the WIA.
Yes, yes, you can.
Thank you. Director.
So. All right.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Thank you, Vic. Thank you, Devlin. Appreciate you both. Okay, moving on to agenda item four point zero two. This one's short and sweet. It's just about board protocols. All board directors received an email outlining, I think it's six pages. So we'll just go ahead and go through that, schedule a workshop for probably a couple of weeks from now and work through that document. Okay, all right. Moving on to agenda item five point zero one, diversity, equity and inclusion, DEI update. And I will hand it over to Acting Super Kim Whitworth. So Diane Hermes, who is our Director of Digital Learning, has taken the lead on helping us to put together our DEI work or body of work that we are doing. So when she's done with this presentation, we have a lot of things that I know people are going to want to discuss and questions and stuff. So let's go ahead and get started with Diane. And Chris, are you helping? Excellent. Kristi Hilsen, Principal at Park Place Middle School. Blake Baird, Principal at Leaders in Learning. Brett Willie, Principal at Monroe High School. And Chris Cronus, Executive Director of Categorical Programs and Elementary Education. Thanks, y'all.
All right, kid. Yeah. Good evening, and we want to thank you for your time tonight as we share updates, how we are how we are doing this great work in our schools and at the system level. So oops, to start off with, we always, we always refer back to our Monroe three commitments. And with this work, before we jump into what we're doing, I'd like to start off by going over with you a couple of definitions. What is DEI work? So D stands for diversity and is the presence of differences that enrich our schools and workplace. E is equity, ensuring that access, resources and opportunities are available for all. And I is for inclusion, a culture that is welcoming to all people. And these definitions were adapted from the University of Washington. There's a live link at the bottom if you'd like to go there for some more information. So why is this work so important? All three of these power words together, using data, help us to create change. The purpose of this change is very clear, to make a positive impact for our students in the classroom. DEI work is is centered around our students learning to become their best and most authentic selves. Most importantly, this work is grounded in action. So our objectives for the presentation this evening is to share with you what action steps are we taking at the system level? What are our ongoing action steps in our schools in the Monroe School District? And then what are our action steps moving forward with this work? So I'll start off by by sharing with you our system level work. Each year, the state provides funding for certificated staff. These are professional learning days, fondly referred to by staff as PLD days. And this work is outlined in RCW twenty eight A. This summer, the state's schedule directs at least one of these days of training to be focused on CCDEI, which stands for Cultural Competency, Diversity, Equity or Inclusion. In order to provide timely, research-based professional development to administration and staff, the DEI Task Force was created. This task force is comprised of teachers, representatives from our labor partners, building administrators and district administrators. The mission of the task force is to collect data, research best practices for adult learning and develop a summer training plan which adheres to the standards developed by the Professional Education Standards Board. This task force will work with the District DEI Advisory Committee, and I will share more on what that is with you in our next steps to determine how to provide this training to all district employees as well as a continuation of the learning into the twenty two, twenty three school year. The second big step we've implemented is to shift our ongoing work with WASLA, Washington State Leadership Academy, to DEI work. We are excited and fortunate to be able to partner with them. We are excited and fortunate to be able to partner with them on this work. They have worked with many other districts to provide recommendations for DEI systems level work. After several meetings with central office staff, the WASLA team has provided us a draft of recommendations for Monroe School District to begin the development of a strategic plan and framework for this DEI work. So this is a, this is a draft proposal where it's still in the makings of what their recommendations were for the Monroe School District. I won't go through all of it, but I will highlight them. Recommendation number one is that the district develop a permanent and ongoing advisory committee. Number two is that foundational leadership learning for administrators, for all administrators. Number three is executive sponsorship at the district level, as well as organizational communication plan. Number four recommendation is to develop initial data set using both quantitative and qualitative data to create a sense of urgency and to provide continual rationale for why the DEI work is so important. And number five, to draft an equity crisis plan, which outlines when there's a crisis that happens in a school, that there are specific responses to those type of incidents to be followed. So I will go more into those recommendations in the next steps. Our objective number two is that we are going to share our ongoing steps with this work from our schools. And so here to represent the elementary work is Chris.
Hi folks. Nice to see everybody again. So I have the privilege of speaking on behalf of our elementary team. Some of our school leaders are back there. We've, thank you. Unfortunately, one of our, one of our school leaders is not feeling real well, so he couldn't make it today. So if you look at a slide, we're, we're doing a bunch of different things across all of our buildings. This is kind of a synthesis of everything that we're doing. The, the work looks different at each building because each building, it's kind of in its own place during this, this progression. And since we haven't really had a starting point as a district, you know, folks are, are doing the very best they can with the knowledge they have and the information they've got. And one of the things I think we, we can speak to as a strength or addition is the focus we've, we've had on and maintained around social emotional learning. We have our amazing director and Joe Nigle, who's, who's provides an incredible amount of, of resources, knowledge, access to this work specifically. So it's due to Joe that a lot of the, the PACS work is being done in all of our, many of our classrooms, the majority of our classrooms at this point. PACS is a, is a system for helping kids learn how to navigate the social world in a safe and, and respectful way. We just initiated work with an organization called Playworks, which is helping our para educators on our playgrounds and all of our schools work with kids so that we can get them on and off the playground safely. They can learn to play safely. They can play games that are fun and engaging and most importantly, inclusive. All of the games that they teach into, anybody can play them. It doesn't matter where you come from. It doesn't matter if you're able bodied or not. That is irrelevant. You can, you can access all the games. A lot of our schools are embedding some culturally responsive practices, but that is an area of growth for us. It is an area of growth for us as a district. And, and so typically, when, when that happens, we see some staff members who are really quite good at it and some staff members who need some more support. The one bullet I want to name those acronyms up there. We've got MTSS tilt. So MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support. You may have heard of another acronym called RTI or response intervention. MTSS is, is a newer version of that. And the goal of MTSS is to provide a framework for schools to talk about how tiered systems of support operate within any organizational structure. And the difference between this and RTI is that MTSS includes behavior because we know that behavioral challenges almost always accompany academic challenges. So you can't look at only the academics without also examining behaviors. So they're paired together. Also, you'll notice that the word tilt, tilt is, is an acronym adopted by Snoke County that was coined when they started working with Continua Consulting Group. And it's a, the trauma-informed leadership team. And the tilts are located at some of our buildings that have worked with Continua Consulting over the last few years. And these teams go, go in and basically teach into how to support behavioral intervention, how to support tier one behavior, so that you have a plan for your building. And then also how to provide ongoing support to the team and examining the efficacy or the fidelity of the interventions you're employing in your buildings. The last is our ACE's staff trainings. ACE's are adverse childhood experiences. Vast majority of staff here in Monroe have already undergone at least a training that's been delivered by Joe Nigle around this. Some of the other building leaders have done it on their own. I've done it. Continua Consulting does it ongoing. So the ma- the majority of our staff have been trained on this. And it's helpful because it gives better insight into what kids are coming to school with and how you can support them, even when some of the behaviors they might be displaying, doesn't feel like you should be supporting them. All right. If we drop down in instructional practices, one of the other things we've been working on as a district is the implementation of ELD strategies. SIOP, that other acronym there is Sheltered Instruction. It's a protocol that's utilized in support of our multilingual learners. ELD strategies or English language development strategies are also there as a scaffold for our multilingual learners. The difference though, is that ELD strategies are good for every kid. And there are things like academic vocabulary lists, language targets and language stems to help kids get off to a good start when trying to explain something. So the teacher can teach into that. And we're trying to get these to be utilized in every one of our classrooms. It doesn't matter what content area. It doesn't matter what age group. You can do it in kindergarten, all the way through twelfth grade, in an art class and in linguistics, language arts class, in a music class. They can be employed anywhere. And they will effectively help every single kid who's being served in those classrooms. Some of the other changes we're looking at is we have a dual, we have a, a dual language committee right now that's advising us on how to support or provide ongoing support for the growth of our dual language program. So our dual language program kind of stops at Frank Wagner once kids finish the fifth grade. We are tasked by the Office of Superintendent Public Instruction to push that all the way through eighth grade and really into high school. We have some options in high school. And in fact, I'm sure Mr. Willie could speak to one of the options that we're going to hopefully provide students in the near future around heritage, Spanish speaking classes. But in addition to that, we're looking to expand how or really expand our dual language options for our kids moving from Frank and going into Park Place. So that's, that's an ongoing project. We actually were awarded grant money for. So the implementation of any of the work that we're doing around that will be fully funded without having to worry about hitting the budget for the school district. I'd say the vast majority of the work that we do do at the elementary level, when we're talking about DEI is really around inclusive education for our students with special needs. Our kids with disabilities who are participating in the general program have more access now than ever beho- before. And that's, has a lot to do with the work that David Perator has done in working with our building leaders to make sure that our kids have a seat in the general classroom, who in the past may not have. That's it for the elementary side. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right. We'll turn it over to Kristi, who is going to speak to our DEI work at the middle level.
Well, good evening and nice to officially or unofficially see meet a couple of you guys. So that has only through Zoom. So I'm Kristy Hilsen. I'm at Park Place and I'm representing middle school as a whole. So some of this, some of these that I can talk to, I can talk more specifically about Park. I wouldn't pretend to put words in Mr. Judy's mouth, but we'll do our best. We kind of teamed on this together. So there's, there's a through line, as you guys will see, like from elementary. And I'm, thank you, Chris, for explaining a lot of the acronyms that we'll just continue to use moving forward up into high school. And broken down into really that focus on social emotional learning, specifically thinking about students returning full-time to the classroom after COVID and knowing that was going to be a large focus of our work. And that's a large part of what leadership teams have also taken a look at. Our counselors at both schools have rolled out lessons through second step. And those are done weekly at both schools with follow-up and through like at Park Place, we call it our connections time. So it's with a set group of students every week to, to build that. Those lessons have been primarily decided by counselors using data and information that they're gathered from students, that they're gathering from staff to help kind of guide what lessons are, are chosen for students. We've continued our work on school-wide implementation of relationship building practices. Those include things such as positive greeting at the door, for example. And so really identified through our training last summer, strategies that each school wanted to employ that we knew were going to strengthen those relationships and building those relationships and sense of community, returning back into the building. We've also implemented student voice through perceptual and cultural based surveys and use that with both leadership teams and I know also looking at those, that data with students. So it's one thing to take data from students, but then also to put students in the room and say, okay, here's what you said. Let's talk about, about that. And if, moving forward. We've also looked at our instructional practices, continuing the work in collaborative teams, following the professional learning community model. So that teams of teachers are really looking at what students are learning and the focus on learning. And then teams are also building those interventions to support students academically. Continuing also with our SIOP strategies facilitated by our MLL teams. Chris touched a little bit about some of those ELD strategies that have continued also into the secondary level curriculum such as since time memorial, students receiving special education and multilingual learning supports. Also, there's intervention periods built into our days to also support students, not only academically, but also on the social emotional side, depending on what their needs are. Both schools look a little bit different. Again, with behavioral supports, our staffs have also had a lot of training around adverse childhood experiences and looking at those practices to restore and rebuild community as long, along with relationships. Using our school and student leadership teams recently at Park Place, for example, we just started a principal advisory committee that which is very diverse, six, eight, and they have a lot to say. And it's time that we're opening that floor to listen in a way that's going to be productive moving forward. We also have in place that Park Place, for example, and no place for hate group, which has been a little bit on hiatus as our advisor has been coaching. And so she's coming back into that fold. So we're getting things sorted here in April. So that's middle level. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Kristy. Okay, we will turn it over to Blake now, who is going to talk about our DEI work in alternative schools.
Hello, for those I haven't met yet, I'm Blake Baird, principal at Leaders in Learning Alternative High School. And I'm here tonight representing both Leaders in Learning, as well as Sky Valley Education Center, really all, everything that falls under alternative learning experience bucket. Specifically at Leaders in Learning, we have recently been awarded a HEFTY grant to engage in intensive coaching with Continua around trauma healing, multi-tiered systems of support practices within our classes. I will dig more deeply into that in two agenda items with the leader-specific presentation to avoid redundancy. So leave it there for now, wet your whistle. At both schools, staff have received significant training and resorted practices at the low end, kind of a two-hour primer. Several have received an eight-hour training, a sixteen-hour training, and a handful have received the full thirty-two hours of training made available by the International Institute of Restorative Practices. Vast majority are sitting at the eight-hour mark. That thirty thousand foot view, what you can implement today in your classroom around building relationships, which then also dovetails nicely to the check and connect training that staff at both schools have received in order to be able to check in with our youth who are in need of a positive adult relationship and connection. How do we provide a safe, reliable space and human being with whom you have a connection in order to best make it the effective moves in your life to move towards being the happy, healthy thirty-year-old you want to eventually become? Which then ties really into Ale. We have the remarkable privilege to have every student falling underneath that legislative bucket of funding, have an individualized written student learning plan with an individualized advisor who knows each child by, to quote, high line, name, strength and need. And everything is highly customized kid by kid by kids. You want to talk diversity, equity and inclusion? We can take you, if you're a student who is, you know, kind of an extreme case, living out of your car, just struggling to get meals and still get that diploma to really custom build your schedule. So you're only there a day a week to the kid who wants to graduate high school at fifteen and has quite a bit of resources. And let's get these artificial timelines out of the way and support you in getting to graduation on time that meets your individualized needs. And then specific to Sky Valley, Karen Rosenkranz, principal there, director there, pardon, had asked me to mention that they have recently radically expanded their library to include a number of books representing the population they actually serve, rather than a theoretical population of students you might see on TV. Additionally, they added some new courses, specifically civil rights through film and literature, as well as an environmental studies course, looking at the impacts of climate change on diverse communities. And I will dig more into leaders specifically in a few minutes. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Brad.
Thank you for this opportunity to allow us to share the great things happening. We haven't had a chance to do that very often the last couple of years, so we appreciate it. For the high school, I just, I want to start with a celebration of our staff. They've embraced, embraced this work and dug into a lot of really big things and a really challenging time over the last eighteen months. And I'm, I'm just really proud of them. I think it says a lot about their courage and willingness to be a school for all kids. So I think the first piece I just want to share is, as, as we talked about earlier, this is really a long-term kind of vision around this. And I think, I think all of us would agree with that. And, and for us at the high school, that how that shows up is really thinking about, like, how do we have teams lead this work in our building so that it's not dependent on individual people? It's, it's creates ownership and buy-in across the staff. And I'm proud to share that thirty-eight of our certificated staff is on one of our five coalitions, which is just under half of our teaching staff as a part of this. We've also got about twenty students who have been involved. And that number will continue to grow. But it's just, I think it really says a lot about the people that walk through those doors every day and, and their commitment to, to creating a school for, for all of the kids that, that we serve. I think just a couple of quick highlights around diversity. We'll start with that one. Our, our race equity team led by Rachel Bailey have, have just done a phenomenal job this year of creating a lot more celebration around diversity, which is something that has been needed at the high school. I think what they're also doing this year is really paying attention to all the celebrations and traditions that we normally have. And how do we, how do we help our students see themselves in those traditions? So a lot of it is planning for next year. And so it hasn't been as visible this year as, as, as it will be in the future. But just as an example, our, our celebration of Black History Month was ten times what it has ever been. And, and that's because they really focused on, on, on bringing those great things to light and really do it, being more intentional with, with those celebrations. So you will continue to see that improve over the course of time. I think the other piece around that area that I want to celebrate with that team is they have created four up to this point, lessons that we have delivered across all of our classes. The most recent one Nathan mentioned was last week around identity. And really it's working with our staff and our students and how to have these conversations and be comfortable doing so and to really get student voice as we talk about things that we need to, to talk about across our, our building. And so that, that team has really taken that challenge on and helped our staff have those conversations and provide access points for, for all of our teachers. Some are very comfortable talking about hard things with, with our kids. And some of them are a little bit more nervous to do that. And, and they've found a way to, to help our staff really access that, no matter where they are in that journey. Equity, I would say that just highlighting our couple of our teams, our, our intervention team led by Jennifer Murphy is really building out what Chris talked about, a multi-tiered system of supports for students, kind of a safety net. And I think the one area this year they focused on is our academic connection time with around academics, but really making the old version of Bearcat time more intentional and focused on helping students with what they need in their classes. So we've got a long way to go in that, but they've, they've really dug into that work. And then the other team just highlighting is, is the team Noah's leading. And that's our Bearcats Together team. They're really trying to create really trying to create a positive behavioral approach to 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 our system, which is not something we've had system-wide in the past. And their their heavy lift this year has been working with our staff and our students on kind of distilling out our core values. And that's really important because it gives us something to anchor to moving forward. And it's the commitments that we're making as a school community around creating a school for for all of our students. So I'm really proud of that because that takes a lot of work to get all staff and all students engaged in something like that. And and it's just really cool to see that develop. As far as inclusion goes, and there's more to share, I'm just highlighting a couple of the big pieces. As far as inclusion goes, I think, you know, just like Chris mentioned, I think our biggest strength in that area is around our students with an I E P. I don't know the exact percentage, but I would, I would say somewhere between 95 and 98% of our students at Monroe High School, including our life skills students are accessing grade levels, grade level curriculum and a grade level class. So we don't send kids somewhere else to get help. We provide that support in class. We have a long ways to go at getting better at that. But I I would venture to say you might find five, maybe 10 high schools in the state that have that percentage of students receiving the support they need in in a grade level class. And 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 that, again, that says a lot about about our staff that engage in that work. And in a short amount of time, I mean, we're, we're already being asked to share, how are you doing that that at a high school? We're we're sharing with North Shore this week, their secondary principals want to know how we create a master schedule to make that happen. We've been asked to present in May to about 60 school districts across our state, the great work happening. So it's it's a really great feather in the cap of our staff that their efforts are are being noticed in Monroe and also outside of Monroe. So those are some of the big celebrations. We have a lot of great successes. I think one of the things we've seen is an increase in reporting, just some big things and some of them are just small things that happen. But we want to know what's happening in our building. Kids are accessing the Safe Schools Reporting System, which is a good thing. We have teachers and kids come up to us daily like, hey, this, you know, we heard this in the hall or this was said in class, like, how do we handle that? And so we're having those conversations, which is which is what we want so that we can help our school move forward. We've hired six or we've we've added six staff of color to our team this year, which is which is great as we continue to try to diversify our our staff. And I think the last thing to share, we're we're creating a student survey that'll give us some baseline data this year, just on are we a school for all kids? And what do what do our students think about that? And that's something we can continue to have them take over time so we can measure, measure our progress. So.
Thank you, Brett. I think you you said it a couple of times that celebrate the good work. And I think for everyone here representing our buildings that there's a lot of great work that's happening in our buildings. And as we move forward, before I get into our next steps, I do want to share a quote with you from Dr. Dr. Kyle Kenosha. He is professor at U Dub Bothell. And he says, "It will take the entire school district community to accomplish the task of every student succeeding to their highest potential and every student having a strong sense of belonging." And so this is great work that we have in front of us to do. And as we move toward a district strategic plan and framework, which accomplishes this great task in front of us, I think we need to really focus on the recommendations from the WASLA partnership. The first one of them being to create a permanent and ongoing advisory committee. And so I will read to you. So those recommendations that I shared in draft form, they're actually three full pages where they're expanded upon. So there's a lot more to it than just those recommendations. But like you say, they're in draft form. So but as far as the committee goes, some of the recommendations are that, first of all, the committee is representative of the stakeholders, and that includes teachers, that includes classified staff, elementary and secondary level leaders, community and parent representatives, student representatives, central office representatives, and the superintendent or designee. And that the role of this advisory committee is to study topics related to the stated focus and provide recommendations and other forms of guidance to the district with the aim of obtaining equitable outcomes. The advisory committee will assist the district by communicating the rationale, research, and other bodies of knowledge behind its recommendations. The charge of the committee would be to serve as a place where data, research, and information are gathered and processed to develop recommendations. An important role of the committee would be to develop its own expertise for the purpose of providing guidance. So as we, as we look at the definitions of of that committee, our steps moving forward are going to be that how can we use this committee as an advisory board to the district? That all decisions are go through this committee. And that if there's any proposals that those proposals also go through the committee so that they are tied back into the work of the strategic plan as well as the framework. And so this would include the work such as the work proposed by Bill Dela Cruz and any other proposals that come forth, that there is an advisory committee that is made up of representatives from the district and the community that can look at all of the proposals and make sure of that alignment. One last step moving forward is just to create transparency. We are going to work with our communications department to set up a website that demonstrates the strategic plan, and it lays out all of the specific goals as well as progress toward those goals through a color-coded system so that anyone can look and see here are the specific goals and here's our progress toward those goals. So with that being said, I will open it up to questions.
Can I just say this stuff is my jam? And I am, and I am so excited to hear about all of the work that is happening in all of our buildings. And I want to express such gratitude. And it's so important. It's so important. And and it is hard work. And as somebody who I would say that I started my journey on this in around 2017, I feel like once once your eyes are opened to the work, you really can't turn away from it. And and you just kind of build from there. And I'm so excited to hear about how many people we have already in this community who are ready to to move forward together and to work harder together. Because it really does benefit all of our students. So I I got to attend a webinar over the weekend called Disability Teaches Us: Reframing Possibilities, Meaningful Inclusion, if not if, but how. It ties in so much. So I was learning about inclusionary education, which I think is great. I was also on the O S P I Special Education Design State Design Team since the summer and have learned a lot there as well. And one of the things over the weekend during the webinar that they said is that it is not, it is not children, but programs that need to be made ready for inclusive education. And it sounds to me like that's the work that's happening. And so I'm really excited about it. If there is room on this advisory committee for an ex officio, you know, board member or two. And if that aligns with with the work that we're doing, I would love to be there. And please just know that that I am supporting you and I appreciate you. Thanks.
First of all, building administrators, let's see you guys out there. Thank you guys for coming tonight. It's late. And I appreciate all of you guys working hard and guys representing your teams. I think that it's really important to see. For the board, it's nice to see human beings again instead of screens. I hate screen time. And I think that something that's really important about these conversations is to see a unity among the buildings. I know not every administrator can be here. I get that's not a reality, but a very large number from across from elementary, middle, and high alternatives representatives. That's this is a huge thing of what this looks like building wide. And I think to help teachers and support staff to implement things that make all kids feel valuable, to make all kids feel included, to make all all kids know that they are special, not just feel special, but know that they are, know that they're cared for, and they can be successful is a huge, huge deal. And to create a culture that does that is an important thing. So I appreciate you guys coming and presenting this. This is a lot, is a heavy lift that we've been working on. And I'm really thankful that and looking forward to seeing what this looks like as we we process this. I think for the task force also that it serves as a hub, if you will, I guess, for us to be able to process suggestions and things like that, not a filter to to just filter things out. But I think a hub to say, how do we make sure that this aligns with legal? How does it align with best practices? How does it align with policy so that we can take great ideas and move them forward into into actual like realistic implementation of policy? So I appreciate this a lot of work and a lot ahead of us. So thank you guys for your time. It means a lot that you guys are here tonight. Thank you.
There's a reason I wanted to have this removed from the agenda. This is different than what I was expecting. As we know, or as we've heard, there is a crisis at the school at every level in the community. There's hate and venom throughout all facets of every school. And what I was expecting is what's happening now. And I don't see anything happening now to address the problems that we have. We had Bill Dela Cruz come in for listening. And I felt that through his guidance and through the information that we received that he would guide us in terms of giving us a direction for diversity. The fact that, you know, I know there's a lot of hard work that went into this, and there's a lot of good items that are that currently are and will continue to grow. But I'm upset that we don't have an actual action plan right at this point. We need to have action. We had the Department of Justice available that President Bumpus and Superintendent. We both joined in. We could have had the federal government come in, who are no nonsense and started committees and work with the youth. And this is the first time I've heard anything ever about what we're doing towards diversity. Maybe it was secret. Maybe you guys were doing this in private. I never received any updates from the superintendent. If so many people are working on this, why wasn't the board informed of any part of this? The work that was happening to tackle this. So what is the action to take care of things right now? Bill Dela Cruz was supposed to come in, he came in, he received, did a listening session. Getting to know the entire community, all the schools, he should have been able to. He was to identify by listening to individuals and make a report to the board. And from that report, we will would have looked at his recommendation. And through the guidance and advice could work in conjunction with all the individuals that are working on this. But this is this should have been brought for the board a long time ago. There's supposed to be no surprises among the board members and the superintendent. That's why I wanted to have this taken off the agenda, not to have it ever discussed, but not to have it discussed without that without a discussion in the superintendent. So it's a serious matter. And I'm going to ask for direct action to handle the problems that we have right at this moment. So that's my.
So I haven't gone yet. I appreciate you all for being here. Thank you for all the work that you are doing and continue to do. I know that we've had a very, very busy season. I don't know about you, but the last three months have been a really long year for me. And so I'm really happy to have this on the agenda today and have you all show up and present, show up every day emotionally, mentally, physically for your roles and put forth your best effort and all of your heart and everything that you do. So I appreciate you so much for doing that for our students and our families. Thank you for your presentation today. Very excited for the work that continues to happen and that has been happening. Again, just it's been a long three months. So I appreciate that you are all showing up. Thank you to our administrators in the back for showing up, being here, being present. I think that's such a big deal. And so I appreciate that you all made the time to be here. I do want to just clarify some pieces, and I'm hoping acting super, Ms. Kim Wirth, you can just answer some of these for us. What is WASLA? W S L A? What is and and just to follow up, what is this costing us? You know, we have a failed levy. Have we worked with WASLA before?
Yes, WASLA is a a leadership opportunity that came through the Washington Association of School Administrators. And WASLA stands for Washington State Leadership Academy. We came into a partnership with them in 2020, 2021. And that has continued. It was free the first year, and this year is $3,000. And I believe it's $3,000 again for the next year, but I'm not sure what the the longevity of that partnership is. But that's, that's what it is. So we began with, let's see, it was three school administrators, the superintendent, myself, and David Perator, where we worked with Dr. Larry Nyland to review the the Washington as a leadership associate or curriculum framework. So we looked at our data, we looked at the framework, and we rated ourselves. And and a a problem of practice that we identified was around culture and climate in our schools and in our district. So that was our focus. We did some surveys to find out what school leadership and district leadership felt were some of the problems that we need to look into and started to develop an action plan around communication, around celebrations, around identifying areas that we can focus on to work together. So that is our relationship with WASLA. It was going, it was going, okay. I think sometimes we felt like we had a hard time making the connection between what we were doing with WASLA during our we we meet with districts from other from across the state as well, like once a month. So we were just having a hard time connecting what we were doing with them with the work that we were doing here. And after multiple conversations, Dr. Nyland suggested that we bring in Kyle Kenosha to help us with our D E I work. And it was a really exciting opportunity. Dr. Kenosha is a mentor to a number of our school leaders that we have. They went through the University of Washington Bothell Program along with Dr. Smith. So there was a connection there. He also came in and did a keynote for us this past summer. So he's somebody that we know, somebody that we like, and somebody that we trust. We, can I just keep talking? Okay, because I can just keep talking. So we really appreciated Bill Dela Cruz coming in. As he was going around working with groups and talking, I I know that I learned quite a bit from how he he felt like he was going to approach this work. He is still somebody that we would like to work with. His proposal had a couple of modules foundational bias, conflict mediation strategies, bias 2.0, deconstructing bias, strategic planning. These modules are things that we believe would help us in our work that we're doing. One of our problems right now is we couldn't get release time for our teachers. So while this proposal was very interesting, and it was like, yes, this this looks like, you know, some a good partnership. It looks like good work. Two things, one, we just were not able to provide the release time for our staff to engage in this work. Two, it was not the more broad systemic structure that we that we wanted to make sure that we were doing. And I and I just want to reiterate something that Brett said. Teams leading this work so it is not dependent on an individual. And not that I'm saying it would have been dependent on Bill or a superintendent or a leader who is really passionate about the work or a board member who's it's a team that we want to bring together to help us make decisions and to help guide the work that we're doing here. So this is how this all came about. This was kind of the genesis and where it started. I think I think for the first time, this connection with WASLA and with Dr. Nyland and Dr. Konoschira, we finally are starting to understand I guess, the vision of where this is going and what it could be. And it's a very exciting time and I think we have hope with our staff and with our students and our leadership down here. And and I just wanted to close my comments with how incredibly proud I am of this group of people. They are truly amazing and they lead amazing teachers. And what they all want is they want to have an opportunity to work in a district and in a school and a classroom that has a strong positive culture, that's really learning together and reaching out for kids and to be a part of decisions that we're making that impact them and impact the students in their classroom. So I hope that this is something that ends up being just a blue ribbon banner kind of thing for all of us. I think it's, I think it's needed. I think it's exciting and we are poised to do this work now.
I just want to, I guess, address my fellow board members who have indicated that that this wasn't something that they had heard about before. So I've pulled up the agenda from our December 13th of 2021. There is an item on there called D E I Board Presentation. It actually talks about quite a few of the pieces that are in our current presentation from tonight. It also has WASLA, Washington State Leadership Academy, right? Listed as us being members of a two-year cohort from 2020 to 2022. It indicates that we are continuing to implement and evaluate our theory of action focused on district leadership, supporting building principles, leaders in order to effectively support classroom educators and meeting the needs of all students. Project Artifact, there's a there's a curriculum rubric in here. So I I would encourage you, if if you don't recall that this information was presented previously, it is on the December 13th agenda. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? I look forward to helping support this as a board as well as we move forward to developing a strategic plan and really reimagining the vision, I think, or at least putting it on paper. Yeah, that sounds exciting. So again, thank you so much for your presentation. Again, so much for showing up and all of the work that you have done and continue to do.
Thank you. We thank you for your time this evening and for hearing our presentation.
Before we move on to the next item, I'd like to just make a motion for a short recess, five minutes. Just to help, I had to run out earlier. Chris, I'm sorry, in the middle of your presentation, I was gonna have an accident. It's gonna be bad. And so, yeah, I know, I'm sorry, just if you feel like you're in that same area right now, I'd like to make a motion for us to have a five-minute bathroom break recess.
Is there a second? Second, there's a motion and a second for a five-minute bathroom break. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's go ahead for to all the pose. Okay, well, motion passes four to zero. Five-minute bathroom break. Everybody be back by. We are back from recess, eight forty-four P M. And we will move on to agenda item five point zero two, the highly capable report. Chris?
Good evening. Hello. Thank you. So my name is Chris Kronos. I'm the Executive Director of Categorical Programs and K five education and with categorical programs, one of the the programs that falls under that umbrella is highly capable. I'm accompanied tonight by my colleague here, Sandra Monson, and we are going to go through our presentation. And and we are happy to take any questions throughout the presentation. We had a little hiccup with tech, so we're actually using the PDF that's on Board Docs, so it might look a little bit clunky, but we'll get through it. So the purpose of our presentation is to share what with the board, what we're doing, what what the program looks like, how we identify students. And we want to share the the work that our task force is undergoing right now. We've met, I think, four times with a couple more meetings in the future as well. So the purpose of Hi-CAP is really to ensure that the students who we've been able to identify as being particularly able in the areas of reasoning and cognition are given opportunities that they wouldn't otherwise have in a general ed setting. It is not special education. It is, however, an opportunity to provide enrichment opportunity, enrichment to kids for whom acceleration might be appropriate or going further, going to further depth on a content knowledge may be appropriate. The identification process here in Monroe is we we have a referral window that opens. Folks can find that out on Skyward. There's links in the website. And then we have a universal screening process that we employ for grades two and four. And then, once that's all completed, a multi-disciplinary team gets together, determine which students are going to move on to a post screener. And that's the second half of the screening process. Once that's completed, then we're able to identify the students. This is current data. I'm going to ask Sandra to jump in here when when she can. One of the things you might notice about what we've got on here is foremost, you'll see that the total screened is on the left column there, right? And the post screen is far fewer. So the the initial screening process essentially identifies which kids are ready to take the post screener. In most cases, a lot of the kids who do the first round don't necessarily succeed in the second part of it because the the they're not ready for it. They may not be able to access it. There's lots of different reasons. One of the things that I would really encourage you to take a look at specifically is this next slide. And that's our population right now. One of the things, there's a mistake here, want to point it out straight away. The total Hi-CAP population, far right column, bottom number that should be, was it 5%?
It does add up to 100%, but what I wanted to make sure you knew was that 5.5% of our population.
As a whole district is what that should reflect. So that's incorrectly written there. So apologies for the mistake. But what you might notice when you take a look at this is there's already pretty clear disproportionality among specific populations that we serve here in Monroe. So if we have a district population of 7% Asian, then 9% Hi-CAP of that 7% is relative. That's almost a one-to-one corresponding metric, which is what we want. That's what we're looking for. But when you look down to Black or African-American students, that is far different. And if you look at Hispanic Latino, again, it's it's less than half. So we are struggling with some of the same disproportionality issues that every single school district in the in this country is dealing with. And we have some strategies that we wish that we're considering, the Hi-CAP task force talked about specifically to address this discrepancy.
So I would add that in this slide, the data from the with the two or more races is is not as accurate as we'd like it to be in that parents have been asked to fill out a new language survey, a home survey. And not all parents have finished had filled that out at the time that this data was collected. So if you're looking at some of those percentages are going to be off because we have more families who are identifying as two or more races. And so that collection of data is not complete this year yet. So starting in the fall, after all those parents have finished the language survey, then we will have, we will be able to see more apples to apples when we're looking at the different subgroups.
Okay, so if we move to the next slide here, we look at our overall population, something else that is, I think, noteworthy is if you take a look at, say, Chain Lake, 27 of the students who qualified are from Chain Lake, 10 from Frylands. Frank Wagner. It's our largest school with the fewest number of students have been qualified. Again, this speaks volumes to the problem we mentioned the previous slide because Frank Wagner is also our most diverse school with the highest number of students of color that we serve outside the high school in Park Place. So again, this is, it's a very clear problem that the data is telling us, and this is the story it's telling us. And we know we need to address it and we we're trying to. So we're getting to that in a second. Malpe at 11 and Salem Woods at 36.
Salem Woods number includes the Excel program.
Yeah.
The fifth grade classics Excel.
So their their overall number is actually quite lower because if the fifth grade class is at 24, that is all the students who are currently enrolled in the Excel classroom, which is a self-contained classroom that serves that one-year-only option for families who wish to participate in it if their kid qualifies and not all families do. And we'll talk about that in a second as well. So our delivery model models here in Monroe kind of fall into three different buckets. We have the self-contained classroom at Salem Woods, which is one grade level, one year in, out. It's that's it. We have a, we have very high expectations of our teachers and they do pull it off as best they can, and that's providing differentiated opportunities for kids who qualified for Hi-CAP. And that's a big ask of our teachers because the spectrum of learners in any classroom is pretty darn broad. And and I know that Sandra's provided PD in the past to support our teachers, but that's still an area of growth for us because we just don't have the opportunity to provide the 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 PD in a timely way ongoing year to year. So that is an area of growth for us. And then when you hit secondary level options open, it's less programmatic, less specific to the work that we're doing, but rather opportunities that you simply have at a comprehensive high school, AP classes, college in the college in a high school, running start. There's a lot of different ways that kids can still access advanced accelerated or more in-depth learning that don't require our general ed teachers to take on yet more.
And I would say that second bullet really refers to cluster models where we try to have three to five highly capable students clustered together in a general ed classroom.
And the clustering model is a it's an evidence-based practice for Hi-CAP students specifically. Right, okay. So when we talking, when we talk about the different ways we we support our kids, we we foremost, the start of the year, provide teachers with a list of the kids who have qualified that there's they serve. So they they know immediately, okay, I, these are three kids. They're together here on purpose. They've been grouped in this classroom on purpose. This is, these are some ways I can address them. They can work with Sandra to do that and work with other teachers in their school to do that. There's optional training that we've offered and the one-on-one support that that Sandra offers are primarily how we support our teachers district-wide. So the task force. The purpose of the task force when it was initiated was to really review practices around the identification qualification of highly capable students, the models we use and the professional development development we offer. So we can change practices to make the program equitable, accessible, appropriately accessible and consistent from one through 12. So just some administrative there. When we met, we're going to probably, we'll probably end up scheduling more because we're going to need more time as a group. And we've reviewed so far and overview the programming, helping everyone foremost understand what what goes on, what it looks like. We've gone over the identification process. We've gone over equity access and we've reviewed the service delivery models. So these are questions we're literally asking ourselves and these came out of the task force. Are we providing services equitably across grade levels in schools? I can sit and hear, say honestly, and look at all of you and say, no, we're not. Signing close. We have some work to do in this area. What changes to screening practices? Could we consider that might yield an increase in the number of students who are multilingual? That was, I believe, a question that came up in preparation for tonight. That came from you, Director Campbell. So in answer, in answer to that, one of the the assessments we're actually looking at is NIGLIERI, which is an assessment that focuses almost exclusively on non-verbal cognitive skills. So kids who are taking this assessment, they don't need the language background that affluent native English speaker might need walking in. It also doesn't rely on achievement. A lot of the tests that are used for Hi-CAP rely on achievement outcomes. That's a, that in itself is an inherently inequitable thing to do because you've got kids coming from different places, different backgrounds who don't have access to some of the the knowledge that that some kids are. And that's nobody, that's not the kids' fault. That's just life. And and we want to be sure that we're not unintentionally placing a barrier in front of a kid who could may very, very well do incredibly well in a program like this, but didn't necessarily know how to get through that first gate.
And I would add that this is the first year that we have set up, that we have been using the cognitive abilities test. It does have a verbal, quantitative and non-verbal. For our ML students, we do disregard that verbal score to be as equitable as we can with the test that we are using. But like he said, we're looking into the NIGLIERI, which would eliminate that achievement piece. But we also set up the test with local norms. So we're comparing students from Frank Wagner with students with Frank at Frank Wagner instead of just a local district. So in the past, we can, we use local norms as a district, but I set it up separately at this time so that we could compare students within each school with students in that school. We don't know the outcome yet because we're still in the process. We have screened and our post-screening finishes up on Thursday.
Next question, how do we know our current models mean these of all students qualify? We don't. So one of the other things that now come from the task force is develop a survey. We need to hear from our families and actually I want to hear from our kids. Kids have actually participated in it. Kids went to Excel. Kids who are in it and, you know, maybe they were doing honors work or they're in AP classes, whatever it looks like for them now, we want to hear from them. So we will be surveying families and kids. And then what does alignment look like when considering access to high school level? That's a much broader question that we're going to have to engage the high school team on because a comprehensive high school can really live in a bubble sometimes and and we want to make sure that we understand what the bubble looks like in the environment before we start making recommendations or suggestions. So one of the big things too is that we've been knocking around is what delivery model are we employing and should we continue to employ or can we look at something different? One of the things to note is that about 30% of the families whose students qualified for the Excel program at Salem Woods declined. And some of the reasons are listed up there. They didn't want to deal with the transportation issue. So for some, like, let's say, a kids, kids located at Malpe, we'll get the, we'll pick the kid up at Malpe after the families brought the kid to Malpe or the kid gets bus to Malpe and then they get another bus and takes them to Salem Woods. So they're guaranteed be guaranteed to be late for school, like guaranteed. And we want to make sure that that that's not a barrier. And we're also knocking around the idea of, okay, we have one self-contained classroom district-wide. Is this the right service delivery model when there are other models out there? We're not going that direction. That is going to take more engagement with the community. We're not going to sit here and make a decision like that without talking with folks and and really thoroughly examining whether or not that's the right thing to do. That being said, there are models that we can employ that do look different. One of them is a floating Hi-CAP teacher. So that person would then go to every single classroom with clustered kids throughout the district and do enrichment stuff with them once a week for a couple of hours. That might be a really effective way and efficient way, more efficient certainly than we have right now and in delivering services without having to completely blow up all the models that we do have in place. So we're knocking that around. No decisions, not even a proposal at this point. So one of the things that we have been trying to do is maintain the four to 5% range of students we serve because it's about where we should be compared to other districts our size and average nationally. And we are consistent with that, really consistent. We do, as we already stated, have holes in ensuring that more students of color are represented. And overall, this is a program that better represents the community that it's it's serving. And one of the things that I think Sandra needs accolades around this, in in looking at ways to locally norm our data and identify how to compare kids apples to apples from school to school has been an effective way to address some of the 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 ways in which we're looking at aligning our expectations for the for our students and and how to our expectations for the, for our students and how to ensure that it's clear for families and kids. And then really finishing up the work with the task force or re-engaging if necessary to figure out what's next. So what kinds of questions can we answer for you?
Okay. So I'll start. First question. I know that this happened to me when my kid was recommended for this. It was a few years ago. I didn't know what it was and the teacher had to hound me like, here, can you fill this out, please? This is what I want your student to do. Still didn't know what it was. And I'm like, what? I have to fill out this survey? Like I don't really know what this is. I had to go research it on the district website to find out what it was. And then you want me to fill out a survey when I felt like the teacher was in the classroom, knew the student and that should have been more of the, okay, I know what your student is doing. You know, first time mom, first kid in school. I was kind of like, ah, you know, didn't really know. Is have, has that sort of been addressed? I mean, could that potentially still be one of those barriers that is presented there? Because I know that was sort of a drawback for me, not really knowing about it, not getting the word out. Maybe there are parents who don't know about it. It's like, I don't know what this is. I'm not going to bother, you know? Or I have to fill out this survey, but I don't really know how to do this or how to answer these questions. Just food for thought.
Well, it sounds like you're, you're asking questions really around engagement. And I think comprehensive engagement strategy with our families would include something like this as well. I think we also have a tendency to rely on our website, which does have an explanation of high cap services, what it's all about and all, all that. But it also feels like perhaps some literature at a school, just to hand off to a family could clarify some of those questions. So that's helpful feedback. And I think it's certainly something that's doable. So yeah, we can work on that. Thanks.
I have a few things to say. This is, I think apropos that this is following our DEI work presentation as well. So Chris, it's also convenient. You just get to hang out at that table. So if, if that is important to our district, that's a hypothetical thing, right? Because obviously it is. And one of my biggest concerns is things like access and information to families. So we have multilingual families. We have families with literacy issues even in that language. So we need to get creative. And how can we have families if we have? I'll go to the slide. I have it in here. One student from Frank. Don't tell me we don't have only one gifted student at Frank. One student who can do that. That's, and, and so having parents engage in understanding what this is, and it's sometimes it's just presentations to invite them in for those opportunities to have conversations as well. I also, I have issue and obviously, you know, you're addressing some of that. You know, if COGAT is our one lens that we're using to look at kids, then we need to figure out how we can say, what are other assessment areas that we can use? Because this is obviously not, it's obvious from the data itself. If you go back, you can go to slide six on the, um, the population with the percentages, we have 51% of our student population makes up, or is made up of our white students and 62% of them are in the high cap program, but then less than half of our Hispanic students and a third, less than a third actually of our black African-American students are making up those numbers. Then we have some major disparities that are probably linguistic issues. We have major disparities that are probably cultural. So we talk about taking away systemic issues and we talk about going to trainings and doing DEI work, which I'm, I'm, I'm for. Yet at the same token, we have, it almost seems like a filtering process in place that prevents access. And so my question is, what are the strategies for the high cap team to consider? And I know you guys are looking in that because we can't use this one lens. It's obviously that COGAT is a lens, but it can't be the only lens. And we need to add that to say, what are other areas that we can use for those issues? Because there's only one metric using onboard that. And so to DEI, for, to champion DEI work for students, this becomes not necessarily a metric to onboard students. It becomes almost a systemic barrier to restrict other students as well. Not that COGAT's not a bad thing, but it's saying it's not the best way to, to assess all students that can do that. So that's a, that's a concern. I would love to hear what comes of that. I do have a couple of questions that are regarding, like this is where my, my mind was going when I wrote some of those questions.
Do you think I could actually respond to the first comment?
You bet. Sorry.
One of the things I, I just wanted to be sure to share is that some of the conversation we've had the task force has actually been around what exactly we're qualifying kids for? And why are we using such a small lens?
Yeah.
We have, we have gifted artists. We have gifted musicians. We have gifted athletes. We have gifted scientists. We have gifted mathematicians. We have gifted poets. We've got kids who can do anything if they're given the opportunity to grow and flourish within, within the, the discipline they, they seem to excel in. But they're not recognized for that. And this program is not designed to recognize.
It's not capable of recognizing multiple intelligences.
No, it's not because it's not designed to. It's designed to give a leg up to kids who did really well demonstrating cognitive ability within this specific test, just as you referenced. So what I think this begs the question of is what are exactly, what do we value? I think these, these programs are a benefit to many kids. Right? I don't, I'm not in any way, shape or form suggesting we would dismantle it or do anything like that. There's state law around it anyway. It's not going anywhere, but we can envision it to look like what we want it to look like and not what we think it just kind of has to look like. Which I think speaks to what you're referencing.
Yeah. And I think what, getting around that and even the idea of, you know, I love that you're talking about the different, uh, the day. I have Gardner's Intelligence as I talked with, uh, with Kim about that this morning in our, in our phone meeting. And I think for me is what I would love is as your task force is looking around. Use the metaphor however you want, either broadening the lens or using other lenses to be able to look at kids in those areas that we can, we can challenge them and give them opportunities for rigorous instruction. So I'd love to see what that looks like. And then the problem is, is the timeline. We're about ready to walk into fourth quarter. Is there time for us to, one, figure out what those lenses are going to be and implement them in time for next school year?
No.
But at the very least, what can we look at for getting ready for this for the 23, 24 school year? Am I right? Yes. Okay. Then the other one of it, I did have a question about COGAT with this. Is that used to screen for access to AP or running star or college in the classroom?
No, once you hit the high school, you're, there's a lot more dependence there.
Okay.
Typically though, and logically, those kids for whom, um, uh, more rigorous instruction opportunities and access to say the Excel program in the fifth grade or, um, whatever it looks like. They're the ones who trend toward those courses.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to seeing what other lenses we can use to help access other, other, all students to access this type of stuff, which is, which is a huge deal. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I also am excited to see what comes from the task force work going forward. Looking at the numbers, it does appear that there are opportunities to increase equity and accessibility. I'd be interested to see students with disabilities added to the percent of, percentage of participation tables and screening.
Yeah. Thank you for that. We actually, we have those numbers for you.
Awesome. Thank you.
I can share any of those numbers with you now with regards to special ed, MLLs, free and reduced lunch, male, female, et cetera. I'm also amending the presentation on board docs and we'll have a second presentation up tomorrow that'll include that information. So that you have that to look at. Yeah.
No other questions? Director Whitfield? No. Okay. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to agenda item 5.03. We have Mr. Blake Baird with a presentation from Leaders in Learning Alternative Learning Education Report.
Just a second, get presentation pulled up. Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Blake Baird. I am the principal at Leaders in Learning Alternative High School. And this is our annual report to the Board of Directors as required by Washington Access Code 392121182. Legally, I am required to share with you all as our board all of this information, what guides us, how we assign staff, what our instructional responsibilities are, student headcount, ratio of cert staff to student FTE, how written student learning plans work, how we support the district's goals, trends in our population and our next steps. However, this is the third board meeting in a row that this has been on board docs. I hope and trust that you've had an opportunity to look at the legally binding stuff. And I would like to share with you instead, a little bit more of the meat of our program and what makes leaders who we are. I do think it's important to begin that conversation with what guides us. Our core values, our dedication to our students, caring for each and every student as an individual, having responsibility for the success of our students, not a responsibility to present content, but a responsibility to give them what they need and deserve to thrive and provide equitable education to meet the needs of the individual students rather than respect, expecting students to shift to meet the needs of the school. Through that, our mission and vision that we will care for you, call you by name and challenge you to grow so that together we can build a path to success and joy. We had a far more convoluted mission and vision up until August 26th of 2021. And about half of our staff could recite it and some of our students could point to it on the wall. But we realized, you know, we really need to, we're all about relationships at leaders. We should make sure that how we do in our public-facing documentation reflects how we are as a community and this far better meets those needs. I think it's worth also talking about who and what we are. I'm the principal of an alternative high school. There's a lot of really gnarly beliefs about alternative schools out in the community. Thankfully I work in Monroe where we have Sky Valley Education Center. So typically when a cashier at the grocery store says, oh, you know, hey, how you doing? What are you for a living? Uh, principal? Oh, where are you? Oh, the alternative school. Oh, do you run the parent partnership? Well, thank you. I'm flattered you would think I do. It's a fantastic program, but no, I'm, I'm up at Leaders in Learning. And the next response is the one that nauseates me. It's, oh, oh, bless you. You work at that school. I typically believe in, in responding with inquiry rather than outrage. And so I respond, well, tell me more. What, what do you mean by that? Well, that's where the bad kids go, isn't it? And I, you then take the opportunity to explain it? No, no, there, there are no bad children and I certainly don't have them at leaders. Well, then that's where the kids with really high rates of discipline go. No, actually our rates are pretty comparable to anybody else in the district. Pregnant kids, we've got a few of those comparable rates. Kids who use illicit substances, rates are actually a little bit lower than the district average. Kids have been to jail. Nope, nope. None of those. Eventually the conversation after far too long winds around to, okay, so we had an alternative school. What kind of kids do you have? What makes you alternative? And I'm really grateful that they eventually get there. And so I would like to share that with you, particularly as this is my first time meeting most of you in person. What makes leaders different? We have an over representation of kids with significant challenges related to anxiety and depression. We have kids with really high ACEs scores or childhood trauma. We have an over-representation of kids with free and reduced lunch, kids who are experiencing homelessness under the definitions of McKinney-Vento and kids in LGBT QIA plus community. We are overrepresented in all of those populations. And what do that, those groups of kids have in common? An increased need, all kids need this, but an increased need for that being known and knowing their classmates, their teachers, their community. We're a teeny tiny school. We are itty-bitty. Our head count right now is 73, I believe. This is old data as of January. In my time at leaders, we've been as high as 112 and as low as 23. We have constant rolling admissions with kids in and out, but uniformly we're pretty small. Significant advantage there is if you're a student at leaders, you know your classmates and your classmates know you. Significant disadvantage of being so small is you know your classmates and your classmates know you. You can't get away from your peers. But if something goes sideways in your life, as within a, uh, more traditionally defined family, you have that group of people that you might've been fighting about who got in line for lunch first yesterday, but they have got your back. Even as happened just today, when you broke up with that person you were dating in second period and you have all eight classes together and you really are not comfortable with it. When stuff goes sideways or when the need is there, they have each other. Similarly with staff, we only have one teacher per subject area. I've got 4.0 certified gen ed staff. That's it. So my kids really get to know their math, their science, their English, their social studies teachers and get to be known by them. And they don't have to change who their teacher is every semester or every year. If they have that teacher that always wants their paper documented one particular way, that's lovely and important to learn. It's a very valuable skill, but it's not necessarily the science standards we're supposed to be assessing. And so, yeah, sure, they can learn that one way that Rachel, our science teacher wants things documented. She actually doesn't care. But if she did care, and then focus on the actual learning and our staffing gets to know our students. What drives them? What are they passionate about? If in social studies, writing a paper on apartheid is just not that kid's interest because they really care more about what's going on here in the States rather than in South Africa. Okay. Well, let's look at Jim Crow era laws. Let's look at what was happening here that can cover the same social studies standards and really custom building what we do kid by kid by kid. Some other advantages. You'll notice our graduating class last year was only 13. Reason for that is because in 2020, we graduated at 35. And 2019, we graduated, I think it was 27. We ran out of seniors to graduate. So in terms of trends, we are trending towards a younger group of students. We're identifying students earlier who need a smaller population, a more personalized fit, a school where if they call me Mr. Baird, I'm going to ignore them the first three times, not because I don't care, but because nobody calls me that. I'm Blake. My staff go by their first names. And again, that's around an attempt to reduce the barriers to connection and access. These are youth who, not universally, I want to make it really clear, I have some students that don't match any of the categories I shared with you earlier. But who by and large have not had a great relationship with school and certainly not with adults. They have learned very reasonably that those that are supposed to care for them most won't and aren't safe. And so it's of vital importance that leaders, their sense of safety, their actual safety, their ability to have happy, healthy, thriving relationships and their ability to learn, which does come last, mazels before blooms, have to be secure. And by going by first names is part of how we accomplish that. I also want to point out up here that our free and reduced lunch numbers, uh, just shy of 60%, we suspect that that is an artificially low number. Because lunch is free to all students this year, a lot of our families are not necessarily filling it out because there's already such a high barrier to getting enrolled at leaders anyway. You're a kid who hasn't attended school in two years or a week, depending on the kid. That last piece of paperwork, if that's going to be a barrier, just, just get over here. We'll work on that once you're here. And we're not always as successful as we'd like to be that we make a darn good effort to get that documentation. We also have, as I mentioned, these individual written student learning plans. And I do want to cover a couple of things that they have in them because it drives a piece of our personalization. For every bit of learning that a student is going to get credit for, it has an anticipated beginning and ending date. And part of why that's anticipated is kids can go at their own pace for some of their classes. And so we might anticipate finishing in June and finish in February. We might anticipate finishing in February and finishing two Februaries later, really depending on the particular kid. But we address the specific learning goals and performance objectives. How many hours we're expecting it to take both at school and away from school? How we're going to have contact with teachers, making sure that we're evaluating students correctly and accurately and regularly so we can provide intervention if needed. And whether or not we meet Washington State graduation standards, which seems a little bit silly because all of our classes do, but for compliance, we still have to say that we do. We have at leaders also specific to meeting district goals. We use the common assessments. We have our annual learning improvement plans. You've seen them. You approve them every year. Thank you. I really appreciate that. But we also have specifically for our kids who, again, traditionally, historically would not finish high school by and large, as many pathways to earning credit and getting to graduation as possible. We have bridge to college, which is a college placement class for English and math for students who may not test terribly well. Okay. Let's prove you know and can do the stuff, whether or not you can take the test and have you graduate. And not only that, place straight into college level English and/or math. We have contract-based classes. These are classes where the student draws up a contract with the teacher. Here's what I'm going to learn. Here's what I'm going to be able to do. Here's what I'm going to prove it. Now go do it. Teacher provides support and instruction. They have to meet at least once a week. But they go do the work, whether it's packets, whether it's projects, whether it's a performance. We also have credit retrieval, which is sort of like contract-based classes, but it's smaller. Oh, you did the first two thirds of algebra one? Let's not make you do all of algebra one again. Let's just finish that last third and then prove you know it and can do it. We have out of school learning credit. So if a student has a job and his learning skills to be a happier, healthier, more thriving adult, let's find a way to earn credit for that. So I have to line up the state standards. So I have to follow the law. We do all those things. But whether it's volunteering, an internship, what have you, we can award credit for that. We also can do proficiency credit. If you earn a B in algebra two, it doesn't matter what grade you earned in algebra one. You need the algebra one skills. I taught math for several years. I can document the heck out of that. I taught math for several years. I can document the heck out of that. Let's make sure you're passing Algebra One. You didn't pass it because your life went sideways? Or because you attended in a district where the teacher graded you down for having gum every day, despite the fact that you knew the stuff? Oh, B in Algebra Two? Cool. B in Algebra One. By the way, thank you again for approving that policy and procedure as well. Really appreciate having that ability. We also have built into our program some pretty extensive social emotional literacy curriculum, specifically in our advisory class. One third of that class is, you know, how to student, one third is how to adult. But the big third is how to human, social emotional literacy, which breaks down to how are you really? How do you talk about it? How do you deal with how you're doing right now, now that you've identified it? And then if you have conflict or you hurt someone or someone hurts you or you hurt each other, well, that stinks, but most humans either attack each other back or pretend the other is dead and doesn't exist. Neither of those goes well. So what else can we do? How can we, in an evidence based way, that utilizes what we know about the neurophysiology going on for these youths, actually address conflict and restore and repair relationships, which is the primary driver of these kids' hope? And frankly, mine. Our culture shift. We've undergone some dramatic culture shift in the seven years that I've been at Leaders. I'm very proud of my staff and the work that they have done. Specifically, student sense of belonging. We just, as part of that last bullet there, we recently received a $35,000 grant from the state and have embedded staff training with Continua in trauma healing, multitude systems of support. And they just completed a program audit to inform, okay, we're going to be here for several full days throughout the year, doing full day trainings with release days, doing full day observations and full day coaching. Let's make sure we target our work. And the universal response we got was, oh, that's a school I want to work at. One of our coaches in particular, I haven't said that in six years, was the comment she made to my staff on Friday at a training. Because of the relationships being so solid and the students belonging and wanting to be there, even if they don't yet quite see the purpose of that slip of paper. But now that we've completed that audit, we've begun our process of, okay, so we're really good at the relationship and the connecting piece. And we're pretty good at the presenting content. How can we bridge that gap? That's our next piece. How do we really increase that rigor for each one of our kids and not just meet the requirements to get you over the hurdle? But let's launch you off accelerated towards building whatever eventual life you want to build. Additionally, we've had some pretty increased improved family engagement. In just a minute, you're going to be hearing from several of my families. We are three hours, 23 minutes into this meeting and I still have at least four families represented here. That is a significant improvement over the relationships that we used to have with families that were non-existent at the time. We've also increased our partnership with Monroe High School. I am eternally grateful to both Ed Crowe and now Brett Willey for continuing to work with us to welcome us onto that campus, to provide our students access. We only have four cert staff. We need access to more for just student interest, purpose, band, choir, drama, AP Calc. I don't have enough periods in the day to teach all of the maths. And being welcomed on that campus and having my students be greeted with a friendly face each day, rather than the, oh goodness, who are you? Why are you here? That would be common in so many settings, has just been an absolute game changer. The other piece that I legally have to tell you, not just show you, is that we have added classes in astronomy, volcanology and medieval history. And those are our new classes this year under ALE guidelines. I am a self-proclaimed apologist for Leaders and Learning. I am a big fan of that school. I am very proud of it, but I also get paid to be. And so that's a very biased opinion. So every year when I do these presentations, I think it's really important that you hear not just from me, but from the primary clientele that we serve. I don't think any of my students are actually present any longer. I think that they might have noped out by the time we got to the nine o'clock mark. But I believe I have four sets of parents here. And then at the end, you have a written student statement that I will share with you. Two online, two in person. So four total. So we're good. Any thoughts on how we go about this? Keith? Perfect. Thank you. It's the one part I didn't prethink. That's great. All right. Thank you, Keith. So first up, waiting so patiently, thank you so much Brenda for being here. Brenda Pina. Would you please introduce yourself and then tell us about your experience with Leaders?
Yes, sorry. Where am I? Oh, there I, can you hear me? Okay, good. My name is Brenda Pina and my daughter goes to Leaders. We started there last September. Over the summer of last year, Ray Lynn, Lucy, I believe, reached out to us. He wanted to meet and go over, you know, Serenity's plans for, Serenity's my daughter, sorry, I forgot to say that. Over the plans for her in high school. Middle school was very much of a challenge for her. Ended the year, you know, with barely making it to school, just really struggling in the classes. I think she only passed one of her classes. And so going into high school, it was very nerve wracking. Ray Lynn met with us in August, right before school started. And then we met with Ms. Carrie at the same time, who's the counselor, would have been her counselor there at Monroe High School. They brought up Leaders and Learning. And what we had heard was that it's an alternative school and she immediately was like, no. I don't want to go there. That's, you know, where the bad kids go, or, you know, all she had heard was the stereotypical answer for that. They talked to her a little bit more about it and she finally decided, she was like, okay, you know what? I'll meet with Blake and we'll go from there. A couple of sentences talking with Blake, she was sold. Her posture alone changed from being really tense, talking about school to just like, wow, okay, you mean this is really school? This is what I can, you know, be in, what I can do? Like I can actually do this? Okay. She started off her freshman year in high school. She had all straight As. Something that we did not think would happen, given her previous experience. She loves the fact that, you know, she can call her teachers, Jessie or Tim or Rachel, Tanya. This kid likes math and shout out to Tanya because I never thought she would like math. But she actually gets it and it just meant a lot. This semester has been a challenge. But Leaders has been so supportive. I get phone calls. I get emails. I get, how's she doing? You know, what's an update? She's been to school, you know, a couple of times and kids just run up to her and give her a hug and just really show like, wow, you know, you're here. How are you doing? And she came home one day and was like, people noticed I was gone. People asked me how I was doing, like, you know, and this is somebody who wouldn't really talk to anybody during middle school. She was just kind of just fade into the back and just, you know, show up when she did and not show up when she couldn't. But it has really changed how we feel about school. How she feels about her future in school. It's just more personal and I can see her doing well. I can see her strength really coming through with the teachers. There's just a really strong connection and it just, it's like nothing we've experienced before in school. It's nice that I can communicate with the teachers and I get the sense that they're listening to me and they care about her and they know her. They have conversations like they've been friends for years and that just means the world to me. So it's nice to be able to send your kid to school and have them be recognized for, you know, the great student they are. There's a lot of stigma around alternative learning experiences or alternative schools. But I have to say, it's the best decision we've ever made and she was even going to do the half of her classes in Monroe High School and half at Leaders. And she decided that she was doing all Leaders because she just could not get enough and couldn't get over the fact that she was actually enjoying school. So for that, we are really grateful and we look forward to the next couple of years. So that's my experience, our experience.
Thank you so much, Brenda.
Thank you.
Terry, if you're ready, would you please introduce yourself and share a little of your experience at Leaders?
Yes, can you hear me? Good evening. I feel so blessed to be able to be here. I want to thank Blake and the board for his opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Terry Cobb. I have over 20 years of experience as an elementary school teacher, currently teaching first grade at Salem Woods Elementary. But tonight, I'm speaking to you as a parent of a high school student. And I'm sorry if I get emotional. One of the best decisions we have made is supporting our son and switching over to Leaders and Learning High School. Through his academic journey, he has encountered numerous challenges. Some of these things include auditory processing disorder, processing speed delay, ADB and executive functioning challenges. While I mention these quickly, his challenging academic journey has been ongoing since his elementary years. And some of those have been private school. I do want to note, there have been individuals throughout this time, whose actions have demonstrated they truly care. And for that, we are always, will always be grateful. We have worked with and encouraged our son to advocate for himself over the years, as we have done for him. So when he came to us and said he would like to make the switch to Leaders and Learning High School and listed specific reasons why, we knew we needed to support his decision. This change has made a significant positive change in not only our child's life, but our family's as well. Now, he is excited to learn, feel successful, which is a huge accomplishment and has a positive academic self-image. At Leaders and Learning High School, all of their staff have been top notch in teaching to the whole child, working closely and collaboratively with our family and helping identify specific areas that our child is successful and honing in on his goals, not just his class goals. Words cannot express how blessed and thankful we are that this learning environment and stellar support are offered to our students, the staff's principal, each teacher, case manager and support staff. Their teamwork with one another and with our family is priceless. It's making everlasting impact that cannot fully be represented in what I am currently expressing. It has been a long and challenging journey to get to this point, but we feel we are exactly where our child is consistently thriving. And I would encourage you to reach out and contact me if you would like to know specific details and much more. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Terry. Heather?
Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Heather Young. I think many of you will remember my son who spoke to the board last year, albeit he was extraordinarily anxious at the time. He is a sophomore and we this year discovered Leaders in Learning. And he went from being solely at MHS to being a dual enrolled student because of the co-location. He is what they call a twice exceptional child. So he is, he qualified for the highly capable program. But because he also needs some supports because of executive function delays around ADHD, we didn't feel like that was the right program for him. And we have had good experiences with the district in terms of our partnerships at Hidden River when Brett was there. And then also again, with MHS, having him being in Gen Ed, he's an exceptional student. But he was really starting to hit a wall as it pertained to being in more classes that were very lecture based. Or this year, they've changed the algebra classes to be one where they're learning in pods of the students. And there's a lot of kind of wallow and dialogue before they get into the lesson. And those are just not a good fit for the structure that he needs. And so we started to look at where else can we go? And I, as you guys know, I have very high expectations for myself, my very high expectations for the district. I cannot tell you how extraordinary this man and his staff are. It has been just unbelievable, the difference that this has made in my son's life. And in his outlook on life and his re-engagement in school. They do some of the neatest things. So for example, in, in English class, they're reading sci-fi. They're meeting the kids where their interests lie. They're still learning all of the important lessons and hitting all of the necessary criteria, but they're engaging them in things that they really enjoy. And seeing the kids engage in that way where they might have been either checking out or really struggling to stay engaged because the classes were big. It's just, again, I cannot tell you enough about Blake, about Becca, the counselor, who gets to know the kids, who understands and helps them learn how to self advocate in an appropriate manner and start to make choices for themselves. Shalom Mercani, who is a special education teacher, just really, again, just a phenomenal teacher, phenomenal member of the team. So I really hope that more people learn about this gem that we have in the district, this kind of well-kept secret. And that we learn more from the co-location model that's here because I think that there's an opportunity to maybe do that with some of the other programs in the district. Because that flexibility has just, it's opened up the world for my son. So, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. And our last guest, Jill?
Hi, my name is Jill Reasoner and I have a sophomore at Leaders. Flon is in the LGBTQ and goes with they/them pronouns, which has been so great that it's honored and respected. Flon came into Leaders like at the, I don't know, last quarter of last school year. And this is the first time in their life that they've liked school. They're just, they've got a lot of anxiety and crowds are big and loud and and the small classrooms are just perfect. And that, I mean, it's same things that the other parents said, that being able to, to address their teachers by their first names, being able to be known by your teachers and the teachers are excited to see you. Not that other teachers aren't excited to see their students, it's more that there aren't very many students, you know? So the teachers can really look at you in your eyes and say, oh, Flon, it's so great to see you. I really, I mean, I probably don't know all the reasons why Flon is thriving, but it's not just the teachers and this fantastic fellow, but you know, the support staff, when I call and say Flon is having a mental health issue today, I don't get judge, you know, judgment. Whereas that's sort of been our experience in the past and nothing against anybody else, you know, but I just feel so supported there at Leaders. I wanted to say that Flon really appreciates the culture. That the whole, the whole school population is encourages one another and is supportive to one another. That that's, that really makes a difference. Um, that's that they're all welcoming and affirming of differences. Um, that's important. There's a lot of one-on-one. Um, especially in the advisory classes when they need to have help with um academics, but also all this learning of how to be a grown-up, how to be, how to be an individual, you know, how how do you manage that? How do you learn those little like skills of navigating growing up? It's, it's hard, you know, to grow up and know how to do it and and the kids are getting that. It's so unique, the culture. It's incredible. And I wanted to say too that I hope that the school board will use some of the discretionary funds that you have to support alternative learning. Um, these, I know it's a teeny tiny school, but um they could use, I think, more support financially. Because these are the most vulnerable students in the district and they, they need to be supported. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jill. Um, and lastly, I do have one student who had hoped to be here and then was unable to, but she sent me a paragraph she asked me to read to you all. "Hi, my name is Raquel. I'm in 10th grade. My mom attended Leaders, so it was spoken of very highly by my family. In middle school, my grades plummeted. I was surrounded by many unkind, stressed-out people. The teachers' expectations were through the roof, putting too much pressure on me to ask for help anymore. I had no thoughts of even attempting to pass at the high school, so I transferred directly to Leaders after 8th grade. This school is special because it almost feels like being part of another family. All the staff here are so understanding and just the sweetest people. It's the perfect fit for me with the little number of students. It really gives the teachers the time to explain to you as an individual. You work at your own pace and the flexible schedule gives me more time with my family, as well as working on my passion, playing guitar." That is all that I have for you. Do you have any questions that I or my families can address?
I was just gonna say, I absolutely love the comments from the families. It resonates so much with me because being a family of our other alternative school, I understand how life-changing that is when you feel like your child is lost and isn't thriving and you find a place where, sorry. I know, it's one of those things. It's that mom button. When you see your kid come alive and you see teachers that come alongside you and don't look at your kid as the well, they're causing problems or they're doing this, but it's your kid is different and your kid needs some different things and we're gonna come alongside you and help you figure that out. And that is truly how we reach every child and we change what education looks like by thinking outside of the box and it just, it hits me in all the fields, everything. And I mean, what you said could be described, you know, same thing about Sky Valley and what a tremendous community it is there. So, I just appreciate it. I appreciate you taking the time to come and tell us this. I appreciate the families for sharing. Um, you know, that's, that's part of my story too. So, just thank you so much. I mean, I can't say that enough, but yeah, thank you.
So I'll continue the emotional role. Um, we may need to get Kleenex up here for going forward. So, uh, an alternative program absolutely saved me. And um, and it is incredible to see that that most important tradition continuing right here in Monroe of saving these students and saving these families. Um, so thank you for making that possible. Um, I do have a question. In looking at the report, it was um interesting to me and and I heard you say that the, that enrollment fluctuates quite a bit. Um, but I was curious about if students are entering the program later, you know, do we have more students who start in in 9th grade and or 10th or 11th and has there been any information uh gathered about if there is a benefit to being, to identifying um Leaders in Learning earlier? And then my last question is, what is the uh capacity of the program to grow?
If, I'm gonna save that last one for last. Um, trends are rate of enrollment among juniors and seniors hasn't really changed dramatically. Other than the year that we first moved to Monroe High Campus from Wagner Center, we saw a massive plummet in in enrollment. At that point, the majority of our students that had come to us had regarded it as a way to escape traditional school rather than a way to get to alternative. We've done some pretty big work with the culture at both programs to to shift that and are now back to a pretty traditional rate of enrollment at the junior and senior level. Where we've seen a big shift is a rapid increase in our enrollment among freshmen and sophomores. As well as having any 8th grade students identify us as a destination before arriving at Monroe, Monroe High in the first place. In terms of the long-term benefit to identifying being at Leaders sooner, I can't speak necessarily specifically to hard longitudinal data about our program because it doesn't exist yet. Working on it. Um, I can speak anecdotally to students describing it as, "I'm so glad I didn't waste time." I can talk to a lot of my juniors and seniors who say, "I wish I'd found this sooner," and I can speak an- uh statistically nationwide to students who just the younger they identify whatever the right fit is, whatever that is, the less time they have to develop a mental model and framework of, "Here's what school is and here is the kind of student I am." It's a self-actualization piece. I was told once that no student should enroll at Leaders until they had failed for two years somewhere else first. And that is absolutely one of the most wrong-headed things I've ever heard. Because at that point, you now have a child that you've built two years of failure as, "This is who I am and how I do," and to overcome that is nearly impossible. Not quite. It's really, really hard. Um, as to our capacity, that's a really hard question to answer. Um, if you look at just straight-up funding models, yeah, we could house about 200, give or take. Um, uh, we had 1.5 more staff at that point than we have now, so walk that back, probably about 150. You look at our physical space, we could house probably about 102-ish at the very max, pushing it. If you ask our kids, we could house maybe five less than we have right now because, oh goodness, our classes are getting bigger and we miss being so small. Um, it, it's really a, a difficult question to nail down. I will say that historically, we could comfortably house right around 80 when we had an art teacher. At this point, we don't anymore. And so going, and we're above 60 now, we're sitting about 72, and once we cross that 60 threshold, things started to get a little tight. Because we have a teacher on prep every period, so it's 20 kids per class, which is still significantly smaller than Monroe High, but not exactly where the kids came. I hope that answers your question. Yeah.
This was awesome, Blake. You need to talk at every meeting because you're just awesome to listen to. I love your passion as a, as an educator. So, you know, I can just quit off the board and come work for you. You need a Spanish teacher. I, I appreciate your heart and I need your, I appreciate your heart and um, and how you look at helping students be successful in life, helping them human. I like how you say that. And it's, it's a huge deal that like a lot of times, we waste a lot of time and energy with arbitrary things that are insignificant for life later on and we make a big deal out of things that are not, and you focus on the most important things. The kids resonate to that. They know that you care. And that's a huge deal and they know that you as their principal care. They know that your staff cares and that is awesome. And I'm just tickled pink to hear, hear the stories, the testimonials, the reports. Um, and your practicality of, "Okay, I have to say this so we can get through it. Now let's get to the good stuff." I really appreciate you cutting through all of that. Um, but I think that one of the things I would love to see is, as I'm curious to piggyback Sarah's question, I'm glad that she went before me because it, it made me wonder, I had a similar thought. If your FTEs increase, can you, in your student enrollment, ki- will that produce the funding that you need? I mean, regardless of space, I know space and and square footage is an issue. But as far as, let's say, let's say you had another classroom that you could use and you had the facilities for it. Can, uh, will the student enrollment allow you to be able to increase your staff if, you know, you were able to hire more staff? I'm not talking about me jokingly coming and working, working at your school, but I just, as we have students who say, you know, they're struggling this year. We had a really insane couple of years. So it, it either heightens or exposes issues that have already been going on and kids saying, "This is a road that I need for me to be successful. I just didn't realize that I needed it beforehand." And if this is available to me, what does that look like? Is we may possibly, but from Hidden River and Park Place, looking at your freshman incoming class this following year and the fa- and the years after that, saying, "No, this is what I need instead of the traditional model." Would that be, allow you to increase your, your, your staff capacity and hiring more staff to, to accept a larger student population? If you got more students, would you have the funding to get more teachers?
Sort of. Um, I mean, there's a little bit of a chicken and egg question at play. The other piece is let's call it, it's broken. Um, in the state of Washington, we don't fund alternative programs at the same rate we spend, we fund comprehensive programs. Just to be quite blunt about it, we make less money per kid than Monroe High does, even with having significantly increased needs. We run in the red by design.
Yeah.
Um, which is a terrifying thing to say out loud right after a levy failure, but it's the nature of the beast. I will say, um, if you walk into what used to be our art classroom, what you'll see is that we don't have ceiling tiles. We have art decorating the entire space. If you look at our student graduate uh post-success survey and you ask, "What was the, what was the reason you came to school every day?" Number one is relationships. Number two is art. Far and away. When you look at our kids who had uh discipline referrals, when Linda would print them out for me, when I I do a deep file review before I interview every student coming to Leaders, and I'd have kids with discipline files, 50, 60, 70 pages thick. And when I talked to those kids in particular, that graduate, "Why did you graduate?" Well, I had a place I could go. I could do this thing called art that I could do in whatever way worked for me and I could accomplish my science, my math, my English, my social studies there. So I would argue that yes, if we had an art teacher, absolutely, we could increase our enrollment and certainly we could increase our retention. Um, could we fund it? Not alone.
Okay. Thank you.
I've actually seen that art room. It's really, really neat. I, I was able to visit with Blake and and teachers and so I I, I think we touched on it a little bit last time too. Um, I encourage all of our directors to go visit and visit that art room in particular. It's really neat. All of the ceiling tiles are, a lot of them um, have a lot of art on them that is done by students. So it's really cool. And I just want to say thank you for your presentation, Blake. Thank you to the parents, the families for sharing. And uh, I just look forward to, you know, this presentation every year. So, appreciate you. Oh, go ahead, Molly. One, one more that I came up with. Um, just when you talk about identifying students, you know, wait two years, right? That was a really bad thing. Um, I was one of the lucky ones that was able to identify it earlier on and it wasn't through the help of the school. That was one of the things. I had no idea what existed or what was there and I was lost with no one to guide me. I had to go to an outside counselor to figure this out, who said, "Hey, have you ever heard of Sky Valley?" Well, yeah, I've kind of heard about it, but I don't really know what it is. And she says, "You need to pull your son and this is exactly where you need to put him." And I went, "Okay, no second thoughts, no questions," was one of the best decisions that I ever made for my son, for my family, for all of it. Um, but how do we recognize these kids? How do we offer what it is that we have and make it more known to the community so that we can take advantage of those resources? I mean, do we have the possibility to expand to middle school? I know not everybody has the option to go to Sky Valley because it is, I mean, you have to be on campus for a certain amount of time until the children are the age of 12. But how do we, I don't know, how do we expand this? Because I see this as being just this huge gateway of reaching students who can sometimes feel unreachable and who get lost or it seems like forgotten and they just sort of, you know, as you say, get labeled as this when they really aren't. They excel at so many wonderful things. They're just not being tapped into and they're not made to fit this mold. They are their own person and this is how they are. We can't try to cram them into this box. You make the curriculum fit the child, not the child fit the curriculum, just as you said before. So how do we? I mean, how do we do this? This is a huge passionate area of mine. So how do we make this?
Three steps. To boil it down artificially simplistic, but we'll cover the gist. Step one, continuing some of the work that we're already doing, building relationships with our comprehensive colleagues. When I track, because I, I do track, "Hey, how'd you get here? How'd you find out about this place? Why do you want to come to Leaders?" My seniors and my super seniors, I've lost hope. There's nothing else. Ah, I heard about you somewhere. But my freshmen and my sophomores, I have a teacher who noted that, like, "Yeah, I've got all As and Bs. I'm doing fine. I'm not okay." And they knew me well enough to know that, you know, maybe this would be a better fit. Or my counselor. I mean, that entire counseling team over, team over at Monroe High has done a ton of work to wrap their heads around, "What is it they do over there at this little satellite campus called Leaders? And how do we help steer kids there?" Though I will also throw out there uh, as a student, if you don't want to come to Leaders, and I get that impression, I'll ask your parents to leave and then "Hey, do you actually want to come here?" "No!" Okay, cool, you're not allowed. Um, because if you don't want to be there, it's not gonna work. It's, it, there's too much independence built in. So step one is just continuing building that awareness and that capacity in our staff of what Leaders is and what kids would, would thrive there based in relationship. Step two is I think we need to redefine what success in education means. The most common barrier among staff that I have seen is this idea that if I recommend a kid to Leaders, that means that my school has failed. My school couldn't. I mean, the word comprehensive, to describe a comprehensive school, means we can meet all the needs of all the people all the time, which is a ridiculous notion. Um, and so I think that as a community, a big piece of it is gonna be to do the work of what does it mean to realize that all the kids at Leaders are still Brett's kids, wherever Brett went. Frankly, they're still Jeff's kids and that Jeff's kids are still my kids. And then it's about how do we take a collectivist approach to education? Instead of a, "Well, I failed this kid, so now they're at Leaders. Woe is me." And then the third piece, honestly, and at pie in sky, like, make Blake's dreams come true, middle school. Leaders-style ALE that doesn't require the parent partnership component. It would be expensive. It'd be a lot of work. But historically, I've done some of the digging. There is community interest. It would be doable. I think it would be a, a huge boon for our families and would just be an effort of political and financial will.
All right. Thank you, Blake. Appreciate you.
Thank you all and to my families that are here. Please don't feel pressured to stick around for the rest of the board meeting at 10 o'clock. You can go home.
Can I add something on there real quick? Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. So I had, um, I think a couple of months ago, there was a meeting with Blake and a couple of the parents and the superintendent at the time. And we discussed like what it would look like to fund. I, we were talking about the levy and what it would look like if it failed and what it would take to fund Leaders. More and Blake pretty much said, "It's, you know, not just Leaders, it would be all the alternative learning experiences," which, you know, he's right. Um, I think it, it's important. So I actually started doing a little bit of research. Um, and I'm hoping to get all of the legislators that are on the Education Committee um, to be able to bring awareness to this because it, like, I just can't I can't imagine not having this available to more students, to more families. Um, so all, once I get more of my list together, I've been doing other stuff too, but um, I would just love to, you know, share that with everybody and just write to legislators and, you know, what can we do? Something's gotta be, you know, we've got to be able to do something. The worst they can say is no, uh, but I think that's where we should go. So, just my last thoughts there before I go to bed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. All right. Thank you all so much. Heather, I believe you. I do. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead um to Agenda Item 6.01, consideration of grants. Is there a motion that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accept grants received in the amount of $30,000?
amount of $3,704?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that Monroe School District Board of Directors accepts grants received in the amount of $3,704. Discussion? All those, uh, who approve, say yes, or, yeah, I, thank you. Chuck's got his hand. Okay, the motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.08, Approval of Superintendent Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the Superintendent Consent Agenda dated March 28, 2022.
Is there a second? Second. There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the Superintendent Consent Agenda dated March 28, 2022. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I, and Chuck raised his hand. The motion, the agenda item has passed 5 to 0. Agenda Item 8.04, Approval of Board Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all, all items as listed and presented in the Board Consent Agenda dated March 28, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the Board Consent Agenda dated March 28, 2022. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I, and Chuck raises his hand. The agenda item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 9.01, Board Reports, Comments, Suggestions. Uh, we have spring break coming up, April 4th to the 8th. I hope you all have plans. Any, uh, directors, comments, questions, suggestions?
Okay, I'll go fast. So the WIAA report, I love, um, getting, Nathan always backs me up on this, which is awesome. So Monroe Dance and Drill Team, uh, went to Yakima last week, uh, to compete in the WIAA 3A State Dance and Drill Competition. Monroe High School Cheer Team is holding tryouts for the 2022-23 year on Friday, April 22nd, and there are mandatory student, uh, excuse me, student, athlete, and parent meetings prior to the 22nd. So make sure that you check out that information if you're interested on the athletics website, or contact the coaches for more info. Lots of sports happening this week. There are multiple events every day, uh, including golf, tennis, soccer, baseball, track and field, and softball. So let's everybody get out there and cheer on our students. The, um, last thing that I want to talk about is, uh, touching back a little bit to the Disability Teachers Us webinar that I went to. There were a lot of really great resources shared. Um, if you go to the Office of the Education Ombuds, those webinars are recorded and can be watched, and there are two more learning opportunities coming up with Dr. Levani, Priya Levani, uh, on April 21st and the 28th. I want to say that I am, uh, very thankful for the learning opportunity, because it helped me to consider the budget committee documents posted to our MSD website with a better understanding of what's, what is at stake. For anyone who reviewed those documents, the dollar amounts listed to cut, as cuts to be considered to special education programs and support are staggering and unacceptable, in my opinion. If there is misunderstanding or error, I ask that those be corrected as quickly as possible. And if it is not, I ask that the committee and district leaders, uh, acknowledge such cuts represent legal and moral problems, in addition to violating what we have talked about with DEI work in this district tonight, and that you reconsider the priorities you intend to present to this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Johnson. One thing. So just an IMC committee update. We did meet this last week and unanimously voted to approve and move along the ERT Health Smart Curriculum, to the board for consideration. So that will be coming our way very soon.
No, Director Campbell, Director Whitfield? Oh, okay. I'm just happy to be here. All right, first, first meeting in the newborn room. Thanks for being patient with me, and, uh, and, uh, thank you all for staying and hanging out. I think we have so much really good information, lots of good content, and, uh, I thought we had really great presenters, really just solid information. Uh, it's encouraging, especially as we've moved forward. Like I said, the last three months have felt like a really long year, but it's really exciting when we get to sit with a lot of our leaders, our building leaders, our admin staff, and see all of the good work, and talk about that when we get Leaders and Learning in here to present their yearly report. It, um, lots of good feels. So, thank you all. And on that note, we have 10.01 Executive Session. It is 10:05 PM, and the school board, yeah, the school board will be headed into Executive Session, and will return, we'll save 45 minutes at 10:50 PM. So optimistic. Okay, thank you. Are we on? Okay, it is 10:50 PM, and the Board of Directors are still in Executive Session. We will be extending by 40 minutes and will return at 11:30 PM. Alive. Okay, it is 11:30 PM. Tonight's board meeting is adjourned.